Ladies and gentlemen, mech warriors and mech fans from around the world and the Intersphere, welcome to another Town Hall meeting with Russ Bullock, president of Piranha Games and developers of MechWarrior Online. We are your hosts Darren and Phil from No Guts No Galaxy and tonight's topics include the next few patches, basically the summer updates, including the Command Wheel, the global mech rescale effort, which I see a lot of you talking about, as well as updates to the Assault game mode and the heat system, and lots more. Tonight's chat will be moderated, so please behave and have fun. Russ, welcome, and how are you doing tonight?
Doing great. Thanks for hosting another one of these. I know it's been just a couple weeks longer than, you know, than our pace we had before, but I think we just needed an extra couple of weeks to solidify the patch and the next couple of patches and have, you know, a good idea of what we should talk about.
Absolutely. We are ready to talk tonight. I think there's a lot of exciting things here and, you know, topics on the plate for tonight. So, um, yeah, it is a Friday. It's the end of the work week. So appreciate you being here as always at the end of your day, at the end of your week. And that goes to all of you out there. I know we got a lot of Euros out there and some Aussies and so forth. So you guys are pulling some rough hours to show up here and be with us tonight. So we appreciate that. We're heading up to about 400 people in chat. So it's good to see you all. Phil, how you doing tonight?
I'm doing good. Just want to say thank you to everyone who came out and is showing up. Don't forget if you'd like to support the stream, retweets are appreciated and link is in the chat. And of course, thank you again, Russ, for taking the time out. And one thing I just want to make clear is we try to give you guys a heads up as early as we can. And keep in mind, Russ is taking the time away from his family to do this. So be respectful and think about that, you know, in the future. So
Think about that.
Think about that.
No, but anyway, yeah, it is, it's
Yeah, it would have been nice to give everyone a little more notice, but, um, you know, these things come together kind of like, you know, quick when we decide on what's the, what's going in the patch and how things are looking. They say, you know, we really should have a town hall and, you know, and get this information out to everybody, or I think we're ready now. And then you guys only had a couple of days' notice this time. So thanks for hosting on short notice and thanks for all you guys for showing up again on such short notice.
Absolutely. And as always, if you, well, you won't hear this now, but if you're somebody that shows up late, you'll be listening to this on YouTube or via podcast or whatever. So if you miss any of this, it will be out there. Of course, the, uh, the notes will be up on Reddit, I'm sure, etc. So why don't we just jump right in? Um, Russ, you want to kick it off? You have, uh, do we want to talk the patch? I mean, holy, I'm still not even through the patch notes. Uh, obviously
Yeah, we gotta try to rein in Mr. Alex Garden. Hope you're listening, Alex.
Is he trying to get a book deal?
I'm gonna get him a book deal as soon as he's done with all these patch notes. Cause, uh, he, I mean, I don't think, do you guys know how many hours he puts into it? I mean, that's all on his really initiative, you know? It's not like I said, hey, man, you have to do all this for the patch notes. Um, our patch notes are getting better and better, and it's almost all to do with Alex. And he went the extra mile in every case because he's crazy and we told him that and he knows it. Cause we were just gonna do like a little spiel on the mech scale stuff. But, um, he's like, yeah, I'm gonna just do a few comparisons and that turned into this. And then he's like, I'm gonna do it for every single mech. Here we go. And he just did the whole thing.
He's kind of a go-getter, isn't he? Like the whole virtual reality thing at the Steam launch, wasn't that him?
It was. Yeah.
Yeah.
Very talented guy.
Yeah, he just puts his mind to something and he makes it happen. So yeah, it's the, the patch notes look really good. There's a lot of cool graphics. Obviously see the mouse over for the rescale and a lot of cool things. So how would you like to start tonight?
Well, I think we want to do things just a little bit differently tonight. And we've been doing it, it's gonna be pretty similar, but I think we want to do a little more conversationally, you know, just talk about things and a little more back and forth and we'll, you know, cause you guys, um, have a lot of experience with this. So it's not just gonna be as much of a dump, although honestly, I don't want this thing to drag on too long and get everyone bored, but, um, there's a lot, there's a lot to cover. And we've, in, in particular, I want to talk about the next three patches. Um, there's also some general conversations around community warfare and faction play. Um, and, uh, you know, we'll talk about tournament stuff. We'll talk about a lot of stuff. So yeah, I guess we can get going. It's just, geez.
Well, first of all, you know, happy summer, right? I mean, we got the event, uh, what is, what is the event called right now?
The tournament?
Summer Solstice.
Oh, I thought you meant
No, that, and that is, is that live now? I believe the Summer Solstice event is live now. Some beautiful, uh, you know, sunset beach pictures that Matt and I worked on. Um, yeah, happy summer, everybody, you know, from, just from summer being summer, maybe you're taking off school or, or have some vacation time. Uh, that's all gonna be good. But obviously, what we're here to talk about is what MWO is doing over the summer. So yeah, let's just, uh, jump into, I guess, this coming patch, which has some huge things. I'll let you lead it though.
Yeah, thanks. I think this will hopefully revitalize this because I think, you know, our lives are cyclical and Deco Online is, is no different in that there are times throughout the year where there's great energy and great excitement and, you know, much larger player numbers and then times of the year where it's a little more apathetic. And that's just a natural cycle I've seen in the game every year since we first started. I'd say, you know, the last few weeks and month has been kind of like that. And, you know, we're heading into the summer. There's a lot of stuff to do besides play video games. I understand that. And that's, you know, so we're trying to keep things up though and try to keep, get everyone still excited about playing. And I think this patch is gonna, I think revitalize everybody quite a bit. So, um, let's go, just kind of go through the patch notes, I guess, and I can share some information and some thoughts that maybe you guys weren't thinking about. Um, so of course, the first one is the new map. So, um, I guess, do you think NGG, you guys, it's, it's fair to say that it's, um, it is Frozen City, and I think you'll recognize large portions of it. Probably, I don't know, probably more of it is recognizable that, say, Forest Colony was to itself. I don't know. It's, it's like, yeah, but you can tell there's a lot of the old one there, but it's probably at least twice as big, maybe a little bigger. Um, I think it looks great. Um, we've been tweaking the lighting kind of late. I think it looks pretty good. You got the full time of day. You do have some storms that still come in. Um, but I don't know. What do you guys think? You've had both had a chance to play it. I think it's pretty cool myself.
As far as the actual Frozen City map itself, it's still there. The core, the tunnel's still there, the drop ship's still there. The first thing I noticed when I dropped on it was all the textures are updated. They look, yeah, they, they look like polar highlands as far as that. So, and then as far as the layout, where you guys really changed stuff was towards where like Theta would be over the cliff, that whole entire of the map is opened up now and you guys have buildings and infrastructure further past that. And then also where the, uh, up in like the cove, if you will, that's all changed and expanded out. So the base of it is still the same. What I'm interested in is to see how gameplay is affected by where the, you know, spawns are and stuff like that and what strategies are developed. But as far as the, the base, it's still there. That didn't really change.
Yeah, I'll be honest. I was a little hesitant at first because, you know, like, there's a lot of us who've been around for a long time. And so when the new Forest Colony came out, which I think is a beautiful map, I love it. Um, I did miss, you know, the original Forest Colony, which was the first map in the game. And for nostalgic reasons, maybe, or for whatever, you get used to it, uh, as well as the Forest Colony snow version and so forth. Um, and the new Forest Colony was so different and huge, although it still had a lot of the same elements. Um, Frozen City is a favorite, is absolutely a favorite amongst the community and, and myself as well. I love that map. It plays well. Um, and it's just performs well and everything. And so I was a little worried, but man, when I jumped in there, it looks like Frozen City. I mean, you just said, Russ, that it's perhaps twice as big as the original, but I didn't feel that. I mean, I felt like when I went in there, it was literally, uh, just the current Frozen City, but with some amazing texture updates. And, you know, there's obviously tweaks. I see taller buildings than there were before and
One thing, one thing to note too, that's really important is, um, the day-night cycles. The day is just like how you would expect Frozens, right? Exactly. Uh, and then the night is just like Frozen City night and/or polar at night as well. It's clear visibility. Um, you don't have to, you know, worry about line of sight as far as
I don't know if you noticed, but you can get a sense of that because Alex is such an overachiever that when you mouse hover over the image in the patch notes, it actually cycles through the time of day.
I've got it up on the screen right now.
Yeah. Pretty cool, huh?
It's beautiful.
So it's quick, but yeah, I mean, it probably is twice as big, but I know what you mean, Darren. Um, it, uh, I think it still will play nicely. Um, anyhow, so that's it. You guys will all get a chance to play it. And we're gonna talk a bit more about level design here tonight, I'm sure, because as you know, we've, we've heard several new level designers, and I think this patch is the first patch that you're saying, oh, wow, like, look how much more can get done. And I don't mean just this map. There's, there's a lot more to talk about.
Well, and you're talking about also going from the E2 updates a month to the once a month update, which if anything is going to, you know, show that that is viable, it is absolutely this patch.
It's working out well, I think. I mean, I know, I mean, you know, that's the way we are. Let me put it the way I would say to my kids, like, I'm trying to play the, the role of the old man now and say, you know, kids these days, you know, and all that kind of stuff. And millennials, um, yeah, it seems like, you know, even by, you know, week three, people were like, oh my God, when's the next patch? Cause that's how quick the world seems to move now. And, you know, a month is like so long and you may as well be never in some cases, but it's just a little bit longer. But there's no doubt the quality of the match, the patches, especially now, post the phase three of faction play, I think we're gonna see. So let's move along to the, the next subject here in this thing is the, so the new mech, um, the gorgeous image they found there in Forest Colony, um, with the Phoenix Hawk. That's a desktop where the image, it looks great. I mean, I had a few people chit chat with me about the original pistol conversation, but otherwise, I mean, people were talking about that, but I think it looks absolutely gorgeous. I don't know what you guys think.
Well, uh, obviously this is one of the, uh, what are we calling them? Classic mechs? Unseen? Um, it's one of my, you know, I have near and dear. These are the old school mechs for some of us older people. Um, so I like it just on that alone. But as far as the mech itself in, in MWO, uh, well, of course Alex did a phenomenal job. Um, and it's just one of those, you know, it's a, it's a great little skirmisher. It's, um, I think it'd be a great, you know, medium laser platform, very mobile. Um, I think Phil will do well in it, much better than I will do. Uh, kind of plays to his gameplay style.
I mean, first off, the direct comparisons are to the Vindicator. Uh, the one thing as up on the Vindicator is it has a few more, uh, energy hard points, a few more missile hard points. And then on top of that, we have two variants with ECM. So for those that like to play ninja mechs out there, uh, as I do in the Cicada 3M, this is a five-ton heavier one, also with, you know, jump capability. Um, I love the aesthetics. I love the, uh, on the back of it, the, uh, jump jet thrusters.
Transforms into
Right. Exactly. Right. But overall, I think it's gonna be a really fun mech, uh, at least for me. Uh, I know not everyone likes mediums, but, uh, for me, I think it's gonna be a solid mech.
All right, cool. We won't break down the, the variants or anything like that. You know, you guys can all do that and figure out what you think's gonna be great, what's gonna suck, what's dead and, uh, what's the DOA? Yeah. Well, we'll see. Um, so we're gonna move along here a little quicker. So the Butterbee.
Not DOA.
What a brutal name, eh? I mean, sorry, that's lore. You guys want lore? Well, there it is. But I think more, I mean, part of the conversation here is not just about the Butterbee. And some people might ask me like, well, why'd you make that Butterbee? And, you know, are you worried about hard point inflation and like, what about the other catapults? And yeah, I mean, certainly we thought about all those things. The main reason we made the Butterbee, and I think I'd mentioned this to you guys before, but I'll mention it again, is that the artists and the art team came to me. Cause there was all, you know, the, the weapon stuff with the add-on VCRs. I mean, there was, you know, there was, it was oversized mech. It had all the add-on VCRs. It had a lot of problems. And even though it was a beloved mech, the catapult, it was still sort of like, oh my God, the catapult, like, and the art team says, look, we want to remodel it. We want to start from scratch. Cause it's one of the first models we did and, you know, we know how to do these things better. And I was like, oh guys, like, I mean, you guys have seen the streams now. I think you guys out there in the community have a better understanding now than you ever have. But just how much work goes into creating one of these mechs and how much time and cost it takes. And so this is something where I wanted to remodel it. I wanted to say yes, but essentially you're saying, okay, we want to spend an entire month and then the animators and the artists and it's like, everybody's spent all this time on this mech and it's not, it's not a revenue generator, right? And we're a small company. We have to be really proficient at, you know, what we do and needs to generate revenue if possible because, well, heck, I mean, well, I don't need to get into, I'll get on a soapbox later maybe and preach, but that's, um, that's why. So I said, okay, well, fine, go for it. But I said, David, you guys like, what can we do? Like, can we, can we make a new hero mech? Can we, like, what can we do? And so they went out and said, yeah, well, there's this hero mech. And I was like, oh, that's interesting. Cause the Jester's like more of the, you know, energy sort of hero. And we don't really have a missile hero. So fine, let's do it. And I know it has a lot of hard points, but I think we can, if we're careful with quirks, we can, you know, make it not, you know, insanely better than the other ones or whatever. So
Russ, sorry to interject. Do you mind just real quick, uh, poor decision said the VCRs and the catapult kept blinking at 12, so we had to shut them off. Um, VCR, can you define that? Got a lot of questions in chat from VCR. What does that mean?
Oh, that's a term that the community use, you know, they always come up with these, you know, beloved terms like, uh, you know, ghost heat and whatever. Um, it was the strap-on models that went, so the technical problem was, is that you could only have one weapon hard point inside of the box. Even though the box was big enough, if you put an LRM20 in there, all 20 fit. But if you put three SRM6s on one of those ears, only one SRM6 went in the air and the other two were strapped on, one on the side horizontally, one underneath, or on the side vertically and underneath horizontally. And so it just added to geometry in a big way. They were just huge. They were ugly. It just was no good. So does that help?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so they remodeled it from scratch and we overcame, we, we still had some trade-offs, you know, in a, in a perfect world, we would have made it so that the ears did a lot more changing dynamically. If you had, you know, based on how many missiles you had in it, they don't do that. But, uh, you can put everything inside of there. So there is no strap-on, um, missiles. So we've, we've figured it out. I think it fits a total of where you can count on there.
It looks like a lot.
Yeah. What is that? Is that?
Well, they're five by
1020, is it 60? I can't remember. So bottom line is you can, based on the hard point configuration, you can put them all in there. So, um, those boxes are gonna open and sure, if you, and there's even a separate hole add-on for the Nark beacon that ends up, you know, underneath the box. So it doesn't take one of the holes inside.
35 missiles.
With the best job we could with a few trade-offs, but still I think aesthetically the mech probably just looks a little bit better because it's brand new and they just modeled it just a little better. Everything fits in the ears. And of course, the reason I'm going into such length is not for the Butterbee. It's kind of, most of those, all those improvements, of course, are across all the catapults now. There are no, you know, even for your, um, A1 Champions or whatever, there's all the missiles will go in the box now. And so that's great. And even for your catapults and K2s and, sorry, K2 is what I think I was referring to. When you have the ballistic hard points, um, they're much higher up. They're way
And the Jester.
Yeah, they're much, much further up instead of being like underneath the torso. So anyhow, big improvement. And that's, that's why we kind of ended up adding the Butterbee hero mech.
Yeah. I mean, I'm gonna, this is gonna be a few seconds of personal time. The catapult, again, it's a classic mech. It's an iconic mech from the game, but I always felt it was one of the sexiest mechs in MWO. It's animation, just the way it looks, first of all, Alex's concept art, the 3D modeling, and I'm talking the old one. The new one looks even better. And I'm saying that for sure. But it, the animations, everything about it, it's an awesome mech. I'm totally excited about the Butterbee and, and the, uh, rescale and the remodel of the catapult. You're gonna see more catapults out there. I guarantee it. So
This is gonna be a game changer for the particular chassis. I know a lot of people have talked about scale and what the implications are gonna be for the game. And as I said, I didn't think it was gonna be a game changer as far as like, it's not gonna shift the min max nature of it. But some of these, uh, mechs like the catapult are going to actually be used now, whereas before they were just way too big. It was too easy to hit them and too easy to be able to take it out. Uh, the Splatcat, I have a feeling is gonna make a return. Now the SRMs are a lot better now too. And then on top of that, this, uh, the Jester, the K2, I can finally take out my K2 again. And I, I just feel like it's gonna game, you know, and I'm sure Russ, you're gonna get into scale. But as far as the catapult, huge change. Um, love it. Uh, great job.
Catapult question, Russ. The Founder's catapult, a few people have asked, did it keep its pointy nose? Do you know?
Oh, I'm, uh, I'm certain it did, but it made me, it made me think, but I know, obviously I'd be shocked if it didn't. I mean, it, it, of course it has to, it needs
I love my Founder's catapult. Cool. All right. Well, speaking of, we were talking about, uh, rescale, the rescaling of the catapult. Why don't we jump into that? I mean, hello?
Yeah. I mean, this is, um, the very technical conversation and thankfully Alex has put a lot of that information here. So I don't need to read it all to you guys. You don't want to hear me dictate it. I'll let you guys read it. It's worth the read. If you're gonna read the patch notes anymore, read the mech rescale because I want to, I mean, I knew this would happen. Like, I think there's one of the reasons why the whole rescale conversation was put off for so long. Because we kind of knew that that was a big can of worms. It was like, if we open that can, it's gonna
Worms everywhere.
It's like, we're never gonna be satisfied with just, you know, these mechs or those mechs are the ones that people called out as, you know, the top eight, you know, worst rescaled mechs. Because everything impacts everything else. And that's one of the main points I want to get across here tonight is that you can't, you know, go through the patch notes here, go to your favorite mech and go, oh my God, look at that. It got scaled up. Oh no, I'm dead now. You know, my mech's DOA. If you go through the whole thing and you look at every mech and then we attach that actual, um, mech scale reference image with all the mechs in the game.
Which we're showing now.
Thank you. That, that will show you. Well, everything, you know, is scaled to each other. So it was like, we can't just go in there and scale this one mech down like, and this one up and, and think that everything then will be fine. It's like, they all have a relationship to each other that we've been trying to work with for the last several years. So, but basically every single mech in the game just got rescaled. I mean, there are a few, of course, that ended up being right on the money or close enough that within
What was an example of a perfectly scaled mech?
Cicada. Okay, here's, here's a big surprise for you. Um, the Awesome. And so when we were like doing our, all of our volumetric stuff, and I will, I will say a few things about volumetric here in a bit, because I know that was a point of conversation based on sort of just the, the side and front pixel comparisons that the community guys did. And I'm gonna throw out a big thank you to those individuals. I forget the pilot names in particular that made it. I mean, you know, there's a valuable tool created or, you know, I guess valuable reference chart provided by the community to at least really get the conversation started and really understand how they relate to each other, at least from that pixel perspective. Um, that was, that was useful information. And we did use that in the process. So I don't want to sound like we discarded that for a different system. It was, it was used. It was valuable. We referred to it. Um, but we also went to, you know, more of a full volumetric aspect because, you know, our game, if you think about sitting in, you know, swamp, veridian bog, or, you know, canyon networks or wherever, you're constantly looking down upon mechs or looking up upon mechs or at basically 360 degrees of motion, you're looking at mechs. So the mech's volume and the way it catches LRM from the top or, you know, can, how much of its top is exposed or the volume is what's important. And well, that all aspects are important. And we use that aspect. And so, you know, once this process got started, it was a huge can of worms. And, um, I think the example it's gonna give is that, so for the Awesome, for example, um, once we got this going, much to our surprise, it's like, oh my God, this thing is like, perfect. But that's not the answer we wanted to get because everyone knows the Awesome, you know, is a barn door. It needs to be fixed. So that was a bit of a challenge for us because, you know, the numbers were saying it was right. But I didn't necessarily have the time at that point to do like a catapult treatment and totally remodel it or something. Nor maybe did we want to because, you know, the concept art is what it is and the mech kind of is what it is. But as you can see in the mech rescale for the Awesome, that's, we did do some adjustments to the model and it was more minor compared to the catapult. But, um, we definitely did some work on squishing in the torso and thinning it out a little bit. And, um, we had to do that here and there. Like there were some other mechs that when we looked at the volume, like the Grasshopper is another one that you guys have talked about. It's like, oh no. I mean, this thing is tiny, like volume wise, it was so skinny and so small that if we just scaled it up, it would have been, I mean, it was already tall. It would have been like head and shoulders taller than anything else in the game, you know? It would have been giant. So they, they took some time to thicken up its legs and kind of more like a grasshopper type way. They tried to be very careful about that to kind of keep its overall look and feel and kind of thicken up those thoraxes that are in the back of a, whatever, a grasshopper and all that kind of stuff. And just so that the height, I think snuck up a little bit, but just a teeny bit and try to keep that volume right. So I don't know, guys, we're not claiming perfection. Guys, a lot of mechs and a lot of work and a lot of months went into it. And as you can read here, it wasn't just like one guy like tuning a number to scale it. There was some of that. There was some modeling. There was some re-rigging. There was some re-targeting for textures. There was a bit of everything everywhere. And we're talking hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of bugs. Everything from, oh no, hitboxes got screwed up to animations, the textures to like, it's been in test for weeks and weeks and weeks now. Um, I think they've done a really great job solidifying this for the patch. I do feel it's ready to go out in June patch. Um, but that's not to say you guys won't find some issues. Probably will. We can never test quite like the whole live environment can. But I am fairly confident there'll be pretty small niggling type things. At least I'm knocking on wood. And we'll get them fixed up as soon as possible. But, you know, there's, there's a rundown of just, and what do you guys think? Any main comments and what you've seen from the community of concerns or questions or excitement or whatever?
Obviously, the one thing I'm seeing and is, you know, as far as balance is concerned, you've got a lot of the IS lights got buffed up, a lot of the, you know, heavies as well, a lot of the concerns. And I'm even seeing in chat and responding and so forth is the fact of this balance. Now you guys are doing, you know, a month patch process. Um, I'm assuming, can we expect any type of quirk adjustments to be made in the next coming patch? Would that be a correct assumption for balance purposes?
Well, um, there is some quirk adjustments in this particular patch. Um, I think we've got, there's a possibility of some quirks adjustments. Um, in the July patch, we have a small window to kind of react to maybe the worst offenders, um, if there are some, and to adjust those for July. Uh, that's, but that's all I know right now on that.
Well, I'm assuming it'll be like, you know, the, the normal process. If something needs to be tweaked or balanced, then it will be, uh, whenever, uh, that comes to play. But, um, my question, Russ, in regards to this rescale effort is, is other than little unseen bugs or things that, you know, little stuff, is this process done? Are there any other mechs, for example, maybe in the queue to be remodeled completely like the catapult? Is that not gonna happen? Um, is this process pretty much done other than the little fixes, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Um, yes, I guess that's the answer, you know, until it gets live and something is
Breaks.
Yeah, is exposed to us. It's like, oh, we really should do this. Then yeah, we think it's done.
Excellent. Well, I'm excited. I mean, this is gonna be, we've been talking about this for months. It's gonna be a game changer. Um, it's gonna be time to dust off, I think, a lot of mechs and see how they play now. Uh, and I'm gonna have a lot of fun watching the top tier people
One thing
Decide what's meta now.
I'd like to point out is even though it wasn't necessarily a scale change, you guys made a slight adjustment to the Timber Wolf and Mad Dog upper legs. Uh, I was in the know about this and I remember talking to Alex and Calacius about it. And I remember him saying specifically, he was the one pushing for it. And aesthetically, it looks awesome. But you, you guys also bumped him down as far as the height of the mechs. Um, was there any reasoning behind that as well, Russ?
Uh, I think you caught me on the first comment. Um, it's tickling up my memory, but, uh, the second thing you said, I'll comment on that and then you can explain what you meant from the first one. Uh, we changed the stance a little bit. And that's just an animation stance. Um, in fact, we found that with, say, the Timber Wolf in particular, when it was moving, like when it was on the run, it actually was at a lower stance. And you guys probably know this a long time ago. It actually looked pretty good. But as it stopped, it kind of went up, up on its tippy toes. And we just adjusted that. So it's, it's stationary stance is, is a little bit lower. And it's a very similar thing with the, with the, um, help me out here, the Mad Dog Vulture. He was a little high on this tippy toe type of thing. So we just changed the stance in those a little bit. But what was that other comment? And I, I think I know what you're talking about. Remind me.
Yeah, it's the upper leg. Uh, remember the old aesthetic, the, on the Timby and Mad Dog was it had a little bit slimmer upper leg and then had that sort of wider calf at the bottom. And there was a slight difference. Uh, we have a scale comparison video up on our YouTube as well, showcasing the difference. And you can clearly see it. All it is, is from a side by side. Um, it was pushed in a little bit. So it's a little bit slimmer upper leg. That's all. It's, it's very small, but for me as Timber Wolf being my favorite mech, yeah, it's, it's been my favorite mech ever. It was one of those like, oh, little things makes you smile.
Yeah, I do remember that now. That was a few months back. And I remember Alex coming to me and saying, I want to do this. And I had a small conversation with, about it. And then they'll say, okay, go. So yeah, I do barely remember that, but it was, it was a small change and it's, you know, it was a small it was a small conversation and I barely remember it.
The main thing is it looks better now.
It does.
Uh, also, Alex did post the, uh, Founder's Catapult in chat, and thank you for that, and it does still have its lovely pointed nose, so and it, man, it looks so good. I can't wait to jump into the catapults next week. But why don't we move on to the next topic? Obviously, rescale's huge, it's gonna be big, there's gonna be probably more things to talk about post-patch, and we will talk about them in podcasts or whatever. But, uh, that's gonna be a big one. So I think, what do we have after that? We got the rescale, then we got quirk adjustments, we kind of touched on that already. Command Wheel.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about the Command Wheel. So, um, we're gonna talk about the Good, Bad, and the Ugly. The Good. Well, it's a longstanding feature that people have wanted for a long time, and really, it's sort of a, sort of a no-brainer. It's just, you know, a lot of people, you know, may not ever use it, it might turn out to be kind of like, you know, the Battle Grid commands to them. I mean, they, you know, don't ever feel the need to say, "Hey, I spotted someone," or "Help me," or, or whatever, you know, they may not ever use it. But there are some things in there that people may use, and so I don't know. I mean, the verdict is out for me as far as whether it's a major game changer or if it's just another very small incremental thing, just like, well, these are some debatable points, I'll say, but whether Battle Grid, um, VoIP, you know, team and team chat, or all the little things that tried to say, "Hey, even if you're not, you know, 12 guys on a team speak together, here's all these things we're giving you to try to, try to coordinate." So it's another one of those things. So I don't know, I mean, I guess we can stop there for now and see, do you think the new commands, um, help, attack, protect, follow me, like, it's kind of like the in-game Command Wheel and some, obviously some readjustments to the Battle Grid, and, you know, how much you think that'll impact gameplay. We'll leave the conversation about the minimap for now, that's next, but just as far as the commands and everything, uh, for me, it's like, it's probably, my gut probably tells is more of just another incremental change. Others might say, "Oh no, this is like epic for me." For me, it's, it's another incremental helper for the PUG team.
I think the, go ahead, Phil.
I was gonna say, at the end of the day, it's another tool that we're, you know, given to the players to be able to communicate when maybe there is no VoIP. Uh, you know, or whenever they are engaged and they can't use or press their, whatever the reason. I mean, another tool, to me, it's just a win-win.
Yeah, for me, this is, this game is all about team playing, team cooperation. You have much more fun when you're working with a group. Um, and so, anything that adds another layer or another possibility for people to communicate with each other and coordinate, uh, to me is a big plus. Um, you know, there's people that want to do that, but just are shy and don't feel like getting on VoIP or whatever, or they're just tired. There's been plenty of times where I just don't feel like talking anymore, so I'm not gonna use VoIP. Um, but Command Wheel would be, you know, something that I could potentially use in that situation. So I think people will use it. I think it's just gonna depend on each individual, whether or not it becomes a tool that's useful or not. Um, I think there's great elements of it. Um, and I think there's some things that will need to be maybe tested, you know, within the community, see how it works. Like, for example, being in the heat of battle or whatever and trying to call focus fire or whatever. There, I think there'll be certain situations where certain commands work well, and there'll be certain situations where it'll be a little bit more difficult, but I think it'll be, uh, you know, it'll, it'll work itself out and maybe there'll be adjustments made or whatever, but a Command Wheel over no Command Wheel, 100 times better in my book.
Yeah, I, I'm sure there'll be adjustments. I mean, there's, there's just no way we can, of course, totally, I guess, encompass like what live testing does for a feature. I don't know, you know, it's like that in all games, I'm sure, but um, it seems like it's, it's very much like that for our product. So I think, for the most part, a lot of it's, like, whether you use it or don't use it, like, whether you don't really care about it, it's not something you're gonna be upset about or anything, it's just like, ugh, it's there. Those that really like it and use it in some pub matches, it might really be valuable, and so it's like, great. So like you say, win-win. So there's one aspect of this, of course, the minimap, that's, that's controversial, no doubt. Um, it's controversial for a few reasons. One, people don't like change. There's, I mean, you guys have been playing with the same minimap now since beta, closed beta. Now my, I'm gonna make, I mean, my pitch to you is that just because you've been playing with it since closed beta doesn't necessarily mean it's the best thing that there is. And, and doesn't necessarily mean it was the best thing for the game. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ramble on just a little bit here and talk about this and some of the reasons behind it. And all along, say, like anything, you know, things are open for change, I think things are open for adjustment. Things are even open for rollback if necessary, but I think, um, well, I'll get into that in a little more detail. So, okay, so the big change with the, with the minimap, the biggest change, is the fact that it's no longer just a little teeny tiny window into your immediately surrounding grids. I mean, before it was like, what, four little grid squares or, or less? Four, less than four of these grid squares you see on the, you see on the patch notes, tiny little area. Now, I always didn't like that. I mean, for me, I was, and I'll just go ahead and give free advertising for other people's competitive products. I was a World of Tanks player, I've talked about it before. World of Tanks, right from the beginning, I thought, "I don't like our minimap," because I can only see a tiny little window, I can't see the entire map, and I don't know where my guys are that are saying, "Hey, I need help." And, but since we didn't have Command Wheel, we didn't have some of those features, it was okay. It was the way it was. Then, once we put this new, you know, Command Wheel in, and so you got some guy in a PUG match saying, "Help!" And trust me, I understand now what, but, I mean, I understand completely why the competitive team says, "Who cares?" That means nothing to them, because they're all on, I mean, you know, that comment is meaningless to them. They all know where each other are and they know what's going on. In a PUG match, though, we have to think about these things. This game doesn't exist without, you know, the majority player base, is that someone says, "Help!", and I've always thought, "Well, where are you?" You know, like, "I can't see you, you're not in my tiny little vicinity." By the time I hit B and go to the Battle Grid, that you're gone, like, like, where are you? Um, so, and you can see, who said "help"? I can see where all my friendlies are. Anyhow, so it was like in World of Tanks when someone says like, "Help, we're over here, or target this guy." That particular person flashes on the minimap and you say, "Well, over there, you know, on the other side of that hill, that's where I need to be." And it's all immediate information. And so we had to make that change. It went to a bit more of a battlefield, or not battlefield, sorry, I was gonna say battleship, like a little more of a battleship grid system where you got your letters and numbers, and then so you can still say H4, H5, people get used to it and say, you know, where they are and what's going on. But that's, that was the main notion. And then another borrowed thing, kind of World of Tanks, is to say, well, at a glance, you should be able to see, you know, if someone spots an enemy mech, is it a light, medium, heavy, or assault? And in, in their game, they have the light, you know, maybe heavy tanks, and they all have a different symbol. And these symbols that we chose, and and once we get used to them, I think, I mean, there's some comments about, well, you can't really tell the difference between them as well, and maybe that'll go through adjustments and we'll tweak them. I mean, but I think also it's a matter of us getting used to them. So like empty, you know, like, uh, diamond is a, is a light mech. Um, a diamond with a horizontal line in it is a heavy. A diamond with a vertical line is medium. And a diamond with the X, it is an assault. So that way, this is based on some NATO's like military stuff, so like, if you stack like a medium and heavy on top of each other, they're really close on the grid, they actually form a plus sign, not an X, so you know it's not an assault mech, it's actually a light and a medium stacked on top of each other. So there is some thinking to this and some thought process to it, and I think there's some getting used to it. But, so we've, we have talked about a couple of positives so far, right? Like, a positive would be, hey, I can see the whole map. Hey, I can see where my players are on the whole map. I can give commands and everything, and if someone says "help," I can see where they are and who needs it. And if someone spots an enemy mech on the other side of the map, I can see, oh, it's a medium mech. Um, and so, I think for, if I just stop there, it's like, okay, great, that's wonderful. So the negative parts for players that have been playing this game for years and years and years and what they're used to, is the fact that you don't have as much fidelity of your immediate surroundings, right? Like, when you, when there's a big firefight kind of close in, you're just gonna see a bunch of icons grouped together, much like you would a World of Tanks or some other game. You don't see, you know, as much detail of like, there's a guy right on the other side of that hill. And the directional arrows have been removed, except for you, the player. Now, that was done for a couple of reasons. The main reason being, it's extremely expensive to send all the directional information to the server and back to the player. And since we were increasing the complexity of the feature, it was gonna be overly taxing, or more taxing. It doesn't mean it's not feasible to put it back, but there's another side note, is that the other games like World of Tanks and stuff, they don't give you directional information for all the enemy. And I think we need to at least consider the very strong possibility that we probably shouldn't have given the players directional information right from the very get-go, because how much shorter is the time to kill in our game? Or how much shorter are the matches overall in our game? Because we're giving so much information to the player. I mean, the good team, and when you're sitting there, someone pops UAV or someone looks over the hill. Now, everyone out there just kind of rolling their eyes and saying, "I hate it, I hate it," just listen to me here. If you, someone pokes over and you spot the whole enemy team, and you say, "Oh, there they are." Right now, I know there's two guys on the other side of this rock, and one guy on the other side of that rock and that hill, and I know exactly which way they're facing and exactly which way they're going. And the task information, you can move around that hill and take them out. And I think that in other games, like World of Tanks and others, you've, I think there's a lot more opportunity and a lot more room for matches to be a little more people are a little less aggressive, because it's like, I know there's a, there's a heavy mech on the other side of the hill, but I don't really know which way he's facing or which way he's rotated, so like, I'm gonna be a little more cautious and be a little more careful. I don't have every last drop of information, I'm gonna poke, I'm gonna see. It's like, oh, no, he was staring right at me. That information is, is, I think it's possible, we might see that matches last longer, time to kill, um, goes up, and that maybe there was just such a glut of information before that matches were too quick, it was too proficient in killing. And there's another side benefit is that we'll talk about this a little later tonight, we are working, the whole information warfare thing hasn't disappeared forever, we'll talk about that, we want more and more of that to come into the game. And as more and more of that comes into the game, it does grant us the opportunity then to give information warfare abilities to certain mechs and certain skilled trees of mechs to provide that type of information. Maybe they get directional information. So that's just a thought. Um, that's kind of grading on top of all the other conversations. So, and you know, that's kind of my rundown of there, there's some gameplay reasons on, you know, for the Battle Grid and for uh, the minimap to go in on top of the Command Wheel to make it all work together. Uh, but there happens to be some sort of, I guess, some potential side benefits. And, and I know that most of the people listening are saying, "I love having directional information, I love knowing he's looking that way, I love coming around the hill and know that I'm gonna see his back." I get it. Um, are we open to change? Of course. Um, am I open to totally rolling it back? Oh geez, maybe. But what I can tell you is, it's not gonna be hotfix day two. So the best thing to do, like come to patch, is not necessarily say, you know, scream, 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 roll this back. We're gonna, we're gonna live with it for at least a month. And then we'll, I hope what will happen is, is we'll play it and say, "You know what? These aspects are all really good. These aspects aren't the greatest, maybe if we could just have the zoom functionality on that minimap so that we can zoom into our close surroundings, and then zoom back out to the full map, uh, you know."
Listen to what he's saying here, people.
Yeah, so maybe we could add that, I'm not guaranteeing it, but maybe that would be a nice um, sort of middle ground that says, "Okay, cool, so you got your pugs, they're playing, maybe they'll play zoomed out all the time and just know where everybody is, and oh, help, and noise over there." And then even comp players would play with that a lot of the time, but then once they get down to the nitty-gritty and, whoa, people are two fronts meet each other, and boom, you know, zoom in and you've got a lot more close quarters information. So anyhow, so I just want to throw that all out there, I know that minimap aspect's gonna be controversial. We don't need to announce day one like, "Wow, how come you didn't know this was gonna be controversial?" I know it's gonna be controversial, but I'd like to try it, because I do think, you guys want time to kill to go up, right? You want matches to last longer. Maybe part of that is not telling the players every last bit about exactly where a player is and exactly which direction they're facing and, you know, all that stuff. And remember, it's one last comment, I'll let you guys roll, if you, if you do see a mech over there and you see it's a heavy, and the icon's still gonna slide along the map, you know, you, you still wouldn't know which way they're, they're headed. Sure, they might be backing up, that's kind of interesting, isn't it? But if they're walking backwards and throwing you off, that's cool to me a little bit, but, you know, that's just me, maybe. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, chat lit up. Uh, tough pill to swallow for a lot of people. I think you hit, one of the key things is it's just something that we've, we're all used to, we've had it for years, and it's hard to take away something that you've been used to. Other things, I understand. I think the two biggest issue, you, you, you pretty much touched on the directional thing, and I'll let that go. Um, but the two biggest issues in chat, number one is what you touched on, zoom. Um, so that's what I wanted to say is, you know, there's gonna be science that's gonna be done, there's gonna be, you know, studying how it plays out, how, you know, players' reaction, how it works, how it doesn't work, et cetera. Russ, at least open the doors to the possibility of a rollback or adding some kind of zoom. So, you know, take some comfort in that at least. But I think beyond that, the, the only other thing that you didn't touch on, um, although I know we've talked about it privately, is people are asking, "What about seismic sensor? What's gonna happen to seismic sensor after this?" Because the map is so zoomed up.
I saw it yesterday, um, I played with it, and we tested it. And, I mean, it works, it works really well. I mean, it's, it's flashes. Um, you know, if you, if you look at the picture in the patch notes, you see the directional error of the player. And then you see the red, the red diamond, which is a light mech, you know, is just ahead of you and just to the right. And if, if you had a seismic on, there's a flashing bubble like right on top of that mech, like it, it still works, but it's, again, it's just one of those things of like, you don't know exactly, exactly which rock he's behind, because it's just it's a little further out. So it still works, and it still works completely. Um, so I think, you know, I think because Battle Grid is in the game now, and there'll be some tweaks to that, it would be very difficult, if not impossible, with Battle Grid to completely go back to the totally zoomed-in minimap, because that would kind of neuter the Battle Grid, or, sorry, the, um, minimap and for, for her Command Wheel, uh, quite drastically, you know, because as people say, "Help me," and do the various things the Command Wheel has, um, you'd have to hit B to go to the Battle Grid to kind of see if he's still flashing of where he wants help. So I think the more likely scenario is to add a zoom toggle to the minimap, to try to zoom into, it probably would never be, well, I don't know for sure, maybe it can be, I was gonna say, exactly to the same scale reference as it was last time. I don't know for sure. The new map, new grid system is, is new, but obviously we could probably come up with a zoom level that is pretty close or pretty similar, close enough. Now, that's not, that's not directional information yet, that would just zoom you into the same level of sort of
Yes.
close quarters. And maybe, I'm not holding out hope here that everyone will totally agree with me or anything, but maybe if we put them to zoom, and that won't be in for this patch, there's just no chance, guys, there's just no way to put it in in time without causing too many bugs. So we're gonna live with this probably for the month. I mean, I could, is it impossible to do something before the July patch? No, but it would probably drastically affect the July patch. Um, I think we're gonna play with this for July, I'm sorry, between the two patches. Even if there was something drastic to do for the July patch, like add a zoom, we'd probably have to start working on that right away. Because we usually have a, you know, a cutoff pretty much right after the June patch, within days will be the cutoff for the July patch, because we have to go into the QA. So, I, I mean, my gut tells me that the middle ground is adding a zoom functionality, but potentially leaving the directional information out for now. One, because I think it'll add a lot more just plain, like, I'm not positive, you know, like, should I turn this rock or not? Like, which way is this guy looking? I like that. Um, but well, I'm, you know, the zoom functionality. And then it also opens the door for us to grant the directional information in more tactical ways, whether that's through information warfare systems in the future, whether that's just through UAVs only, like, I don't know, I think, I think I'm open to that conversation. But it'll come out like this, and we'll gather the feedback. Um, maybe a zoom functionality is the middle ground, but still leaving out directional information, leaving that, and maybe we find other ways to put the directional information back in, like, like I said, maybe only when a UAV pops up, or in the future, a UAV or certain mechs, or, yeah, narcs, that's, that's adding some interesting depth, isn't it, than just saying, "Put it all in for everybody all the time." At least, at least I think so, and I think the competitive players would say, "Yeah, I mean, that's, okay, okay, Russ, fine, I hate it, but maybe you're right, maybe if when we zoom in and we pop a UAV, we get it, that's cool, that's more depth. Do you have a UAV or don't you? Oh, you used them up already? Too bad, you don't get the directional information, that's, that's interesting."
I'm gonna personally say, I like the idea, I like the possibilities, uh, everybody out there, I'm just gonna say, work with it, you know, let's, let's, uh- get the system that we ultimately want. But we've got to try things out and, and I, I like some of the stuff that's raised here that you brought up. And some of it I think is going to definitely be interesting. You know, I think we pretty much discussed this to the end, as far as what we can discuss now without getting some actual in-game data and experience or whatever. Obviously a very controversial, divided topic, but I am seeing people in there that are saying they're loving it and, and a lot of people that are uh, going crazy because you're taking away their toys or whatever, but I get it. So I think it'll, it'll be interesting to see how it plays out and, and move on from there. But just keep in mind, everybody, that, uh, you know, he was very open, so.
And I know, and some of our more critical, more of our, some of our more critical players that, you know, they know who they are. Yeah, just, you know, I guess, I guess this is an important point to put out. Okay, so for most, the people that are the most critical about it, probably, not all of them, but a lot of them will be more competitive players. They'll be more, you know, tournament type players and stuff like that. Well, I mean, obviously you have the tournament build. This is not going in the tournament build, obviously. The tournament build is what it is. You can still practice and play and compete with the old system a hundred percent. So this is really just about, you know, the live game, pugs in faction play. So, but that's, that should also provide, I think, a lot more patience. This is for people to, to try this out and try to find the perfect kind of middle ground. Uh, because they can continue to practice and play and do all the stuff in the, you know, competitive tournament build. And then come play this and say, okay, great. This could be neat, but let's do this, let's do that. Anyhow, so there. Thank you for listening and that's sort of the pitch and the play and I think another, one more point would be, a lot of people will always say, well, why didn't you just, you know, hammer this in fact, or a um, public test? And get all this feedback and then put the zoom in, and then, you know, when it goes out to live, that'd be perfect. That'd be great. I'd love to do that. I think, I think it's a combination of things. If I want to be really, you know, straightforward and honest, it's a, it's kind of a combination of the challenges of getting real numbers into public test of the right types of players to provide the right type of feedback and also a struggle between as a smaller developer developing features and trying to get these features out to the public. There's a, there's a balance that's very tough to, to achieve and we've done it, I think, well, sometimes and not so well at others. And we're striving to do well at it more frequently, I guess is the way I'd put it. So we, we are, we do plan on using it a lot more in the future for the new assault game mode, which we'll get into tonight and also for the new energy draw, uh, weapon balancing system, which we'll get into. We are planning public tests, like full public tests for those two features. Um, so we do plan on using it more in the future.
All right. Uh, Omega Bum, I do listen to people every single day of my life about this game. I talk to people and discuss all these things. And when I say taking away our toys, I'm included in that. These are my toys too. I've been playing this game for four plus years. So all this is being taken away from me as well. I'm saying all of us as a community, let's work together to just make it better through feedback and so forth, the proper ways to do things. Let's move on to the next topic, which will be the next point on the
Quick play leaderboards.
Oh yeah, leaderboards.
Yeah, this is, um, this, I don't know if this is kind of, I, I've mentioned it before, maybe it caught a few people up, like, oh yeah. Well, you've seen them in faction play. We've added them to, to quick play. So it's pretty much that simple. And I think there's always room in the future to add more of them and more different kinds and such, but it's listed there. Um, I believe it's going to be separated out into light, medium, heavy assault and overall. And I don't know, I don't think this is live on the June patch, but by the July patch, I believe, I think it is, so we're, yeah, I believe so. Um, we're going to, first off, the leaderboards update every hour. And by the July patch, we're going to add in a little more functionality to make it so these leaderboards can be reset on a monthly basis. So I, we'd be planning on having a standing event essentially that's like every single month, there's, there's monthly leaderboards. And the monthly leaderboards are set every month and there's winners every month and each of the weight classes, et cetera. And there's a prize every single month, you know, in-game content and such, not. So that, that'll be, I think that'll add a lot to just quick play, you know, just having a reason to play quick play and like, how am I doing on the, the medium leaderboards? And do I have a shot at being top 10 or even winning it and getting a prize this month? And it'll reset every month. So first stage, I believe, is you're going to get them in. And we might be able to manually handle the first time with prizes. I don't know for sure. Let's wait till post-patch and we'll try to give you guys the information, but, um, that's, we're going to get them in there. And then again, by July, I think we'll have them. So they're, they're sort of an ongoing event and a, and a monthly reset and everything like that.
Yeah, I'm excited about the leaderboards. I know Phil likes them too. I, and actually I like them more than I even thought I would with faction play. I just sit in there and look who's doing, you know, what, what units, what players are doing well, uh, with the events as well. I, you know, I'm not going to get on them, but, uh, I love seeing, and, and the, the cool thing is you see, especially like on the individual leaderboards. You see these people at first place, second place, third place. I've never heard these, of these names, you know, you kind of feel like you, especially when you've been around a game for four years or whatever. You feel like you get to know all the top players and, but really what you're getting to know are the top players that are social or that are out there in groups or in team speak or whatever. And, and getting to know people, but there's so many people that show up on these leaderboards that I've never heard of and it's just fun. It's cool to track and see what people are doing. So more leaderboards all the way, in my opinion.
So I do have a question for you, Russ, and this is regards to the group leaderboards. How do you foresee this playing out? A lot of people have concerns about, uh, you know, potential exploitation, if you will, of tonnage and certain mechs being OP and stuff. Do you have any concerns with it or? Just?
Oh, Jim, you mean solo queue versus group queue?
Yes, yes.
You know what? I think I might be a little bit ill-equipped to answer that tonight. I need to go and check in. I guess the way I'd answer that is, I think, you know, what we'd naturally do is we'd have to split the, the public queue leaderboards into solo queue and group queue. And right now it's escaping my memory that that's the way they're going to go out the, go out the chute. But if they're not, then of course I would probably push for that to be followed up really quickly so that, you know, by the time we're doing the monthly stuff, it, there's one for each. So, you know, group queue, people can do all the, you know, min-maxing they want with each other against each other and and we keep, you know, separate ones for solo queue.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if it's going to be like that out in June though, honestly. Um, so yeah, it, it, and in fact, maybe they're just solo ones out the gate. I'm going to have to follow up on that. It's a great question that I seem to have been kind of stumped on, so apologize for that. They're definitely available for public solo queue. The question I just don't know for sure right now is if the public queue one, or the, the group queue, sorry, goes on those ones out the gate or not.
All right. Um, I think we'll skip, uh, like cockpit items and badges and titles, right? Move on to faction play fixes and changes or what do you want to cover on the rest of this list here? We've got faction
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to mention a few faction play things and we're going to remember to bring up uh, faction play a little bit later to talk about, we're like, okay, what's next? What are you going to do next? And that type of stuff. This was a few sort of, um, I think you'll agree, really good changes, but they're more incremental sort of tweaks to what's going on up there. Yeah, the ceasefires have been reduced all the way down to just like five minutes. So basically, you know, you guys can read it there, but there's, originally that was there really to make sure all the matches have ended. Now, you know, there is a chance, I believe, that if players, you know, you know, start a faction play match seven minutes before the end of the battle window ends. There's a very good chance, of course, they're not going to get done in time for it to count on the planet flip. We said, well, I mean, we'll just, we'll let them join. And they'll go and maybe they'll get, you know, an auto win situation like six minutes before and it will count. So people can still queue up, you know, all the way up to five minutes before now instead of the 40 minutes before. Um, so that's just a small change. And then another small change is, although you might, it, there's no longer, the, in an auto win situation, the turret drop, or if you want to call it, you don't have to load into the actual map and actually run up and actually shoot everything. Originally, there was a technical reason for doing that, for granting the rewards. The players had to actually go on the DS. The dedicated server in order to receive rewards. We've made the changes to fix that. So now, um, if you've waited there and you say, hey, you're going to get, um, an auto win, whether it's, you know, counter attack or, you know, scouting, scouting, they'll just say, essentially, instead of loading into the map, you'll get the, the contract screen will come up and say, ta-da, congratulations, like you win. Um, and the rewards are slightly different. I don't think, you know, you obviously not could get the in-game rewards, but you do get the, all the contract rewards. And, uh, we'll just grant them to you so you don't have to go into the match. And there's another few changes there. So there's a couple of small changes, but they're, I think, pretty significant overall as far as player interruption type of quality of life improvements.
Excellent. Yeah, guys, we're getting all your questions. We will be talking about what I addressed there. So let's, uh, keep moving through this patch.
Can we talk about the forest colony and, you know, you guys mentioned you have more map designers onboard? Do we want to go ahead and touch on that?
Actually, level designers, right?
Level designers, sorry.
Yeah, but where does it, well, yeah, we can talk about that if Russ wants to.
Well, yeah, let's go into it. I mean, forest colony change, this is, this flows right into that question. Um, this is really just the beginning of what I think we're going to see. We're doing significant changes to forest colony, veridian bog. Forest colonies so much as there's a whole new, you know, giant hole through the major mountain. So just a lot more flow through the map. So that's, and then also when it comes to veridian bog, there's another whole pass on breakable objects, pebbles. You know, even, uh, one major change of a sort of a, a map balance issue. Um, I think all in all, fairly significant changes and significant improvements to those existing maps. And then if you go down to map fixes and changes, I won't even go through them, but it's like, I can't remember the number now. That's, yeah, all the things that you hate. Invisible walls and blockers and things, stop fire, pebbles, rocks, bits, pieces, floating stuff. Stuff that just waited too long to get fixed. It's all getting fixed. So it's not just little fixes, it's not just major map changes. It's all of it, both of, everything. And they're also doing a significant rework right now to, uh, terra therma. And we'll talk about the veridian bog and terra therma when I get into sort of like July, August patches and tell you what's coming. And so I just, yeah, it's major, major increase in map changes, both in bugs, polish, changes to, minor changes to addition, uh, existing maps, major changes to existing maps and brand new maps. So major focus right now on, on quick play. We will turn our attention to faction play, but, um, again, I'm going to save that for the faction play conversation.
Yeah, man, this is good news. This is, I mean, this is quality of life issues that we've all been, uh, dealing with, you know, those invisible walls and and glitchy things you get stuck on. That's just going to be awesome. I know so many people out there are loving to hear about that as am I. So that will be cool. Just reading chat to see if there's any applicable info there. So Phil, did that cover your question?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's all we really need to say about this patch. And there's another whole section on bug fixes and everything. It's just,
Which is plenty.
Yeah, I think I've got, right now, in the, in this patch and the next patch and then like this whole summer, not just in level designers, but also in engineering type of fixes, you're going to see stuff, massive amounts of quality of life improvements. I've got several senior engineers doing nothing but fixing spugs, making polish, just doing all those things we want to do. There's a small, you know, I guess, major feature hole as we come out of faction play, you know, work on designs to get going on our next big items and some of those big items are underway and, but I've, I've got a, I've got a window. And these guys are making a lot of improvements. I've got a few that I'll mention to you in the coming conversation that are probably making your jaw drop and go, oh my God, like, that's so amazing. Stuff that's been put out for a long time or been dreamed about for a long time.
Cool. Well, we've been going a little over an hour now. Do you want to do a quick bio and we can?
Yeah, that would be really great.
All right. I do want to let everybody know again that this will be available. If you missed anything, it'll be available on YouTube as well as podcast format. And it will be up on Reddit, I'm sure sometime tonight, tomorrow morning. Um, and also, let's see. What, oh, we had subs, uh, Phil. I didn't, I missed them because our updater isn't telling me who did, but everybody out there that subbed and resubbed, thank you for your support. We appreciate it. If you're not already following our channel, please click on that button right now and follow us. You know when these meetings and podcasts and so forth are happening. Uh, Phil, what else?
And that'll be it, guys. Don't go anywhere. Enjoy the animations. All right. Welcome back, guys. Again, just want to say thank you so much for coming out here for another town hall with Russ. But luck. And of course, if you are new to the channel and you'd like to help support retweets are appreciated, getting the word out about the mech porn talk itself, you, uh, hand it off to Darren.
Yep. And, uh, of course this is another town hall. So thank you all for being here. Um, tonight's chat is moderated as always, so be civil and let's have some fun. So now Russ, we were talking, basically what we just talked about was the June patch, uh, the patch is coming up Tuesday. Lots and lots of, uh, content changes, updates, et cetera. What about moving forward into the rest of the summer and then potentially even beyond? What do you, what do you foresee coming? What do you want to discuss as far as the summer months and possibly beyond?
Yeah, I mean, let's talk about that in like July and August. And I think there's going to be a couple of items that'd be very, very interesting, very exciting for players. Um, but keep in mind, of course, that it's kind of like the roadmap. When I be, when we do the roadmap, we list off the bullet points of the major aspects, but the patch notes, of course. If you compare the June roadmap to the June patch notes, there's no comparison. So.
Yeah.
I only really list off the major kind of development points and then you can add, you know, hundreds of smaller quality of life improvements, probably on top of what I'm going to mention. So, I mean, all, everything I say, of course, the one thing like the June patch is locked down now, right? Everything we talked about, patch was released, it's coming out. Everything I mentioned now for July and August is not guaranteed. You know, it's never guaranteed until it's approved and it's going to go out. So some stuff could still change, but here's the things that we're fairly certain about. And we do need to update the roadmap. So first off, of course, the decal system, the decal system is at this moment scheduled for our July 19th patch. Waiting for applause and then I'll continue. Yeah, it's been long enough. First question is going to be, can we create our unit decals? Not out the door. Um, that's a, that's a, that's an additional feature that we'll have to create. I'd still like to. Cause you have to have a user submission process and how to moderate that and how to charge for it and just how do you disseminate that to your units and et cetera. So I still like to, but the decal system is coming out in July 19th. Um, it probably won't have all the decals in the beginning. Um, we just said, well, let's make sure we have, let's get whatever we can ready. We don't want to hold the feature any longer. You know, it's like, can we wait till August to get like all the decals or whatever? It's like, no, don't do that. Let's put it out. Even if it comes out with just all the faction decals for, you know, the factions or whatever, let's do that. And then we'll release more, you know, decals every month or whatever. Let's, let's get the feature out. So the way it's designed currently, you guys saw some mockups at the, you know, December event, essentially, um, it's a, you don't place it where you want, scale it, a single color application. It's going to, it's going to work. I don't have pricing for you yet, but it's going to work very similar to, the color system. There was some debate whether it should be more like the, um, you know, pattern system or like one shots or whatever. It's right now is signed around the color system, which means, um, you'll probably have your, your basic decals and your premium decals. And once you buy a decal though, you own that decal. So you can place that decal and, you know, any mech you want. Um, so it's not like a, you know, one shot aspect to it. So I don't have the pricing right now, but let's think of it like colors, basic to premium and, um, cheap ones, more expensive ones. And, um, I don't know if there'll be any C bill options when it comes to decals. I really don't know that yet. So, um, but yeah, I think that gives you everything you need to know. You saw it and, um, there's some, we had to create some limitations so that the way CryEngine works is they only do, you know, like one pass on the, uh, I'm not going to have all the right technical terms. Essentially we had to use more of a projector type system. So what that means is if it's on an animating, if it's on a joint or something, it would get totally messed up. So you're, you won't be able to place your decals like right on like a turning like hip bone, you know? Cause it's going to go like, you know, try to go in opposite directions and kind of stress the decal and everything like that. So there's a few parts on each mech, kind of like elbow joints and like knee joints and like hip joints where it's going to be invalid. You won't be able to place it, but anywhere just kind of off of that and more in a general area, you're going to be able to put those and scale them and do whatever you want to them. So, um, and you're going to, you know, color them and stuff. And yeah, it's going to be, um, I think it's going to be pretty great. So, um, there were some other technical challenges with using Crytek where we can't, um, we had, we fixed most of them, like, you know, the moving missile bay doors and all that stuff are, were challenges. We've gotten past those, um, damage because we didn't want to do an entire another rendering pass or rather just you have to put, you know, the whole mech through the entire renderer again to render the damage on top of the deck. Or there's just, we don't have the performance for that. So the deckle itself is going to take the damage. Damage texture is going to be around it. So it's less than perfect, but not in our opinion, the reason to not have them. So we'll, we'll see how it goes and it's just us to go into testing and we'll maybe we can make some other improvements to the system. But, um, I think it's a, you know, without having to rewrite the engine, it's I think the best system we can come up with for our game based on the way our mechs are created within this engine. Um, I, I'm not trying to hope I'm not casting too much shade on it. I think it's going to look great. I think it's going to be awesome. Well, there you go.
Hands down, step one of the decal system is way better than step zero. So understanding that there will be multiple stages and that, you know, the things that we want will be rolling out eventually. I'm just happy to see them in game finally, and it'll be fun to, to start moving forward. Now, do you foresee, uh, decals, uh, being available, you know, maybe like rewards for events, um, loyalty decals, founders decals. I'm reading from chat, some of the stuff that people are asking. Um, you know, kind of the similar to what we do with colors and, and patterns now.
Yeah. And all things should be possible, especially if you look at the colors, we've given my colors for events, we've given, I mean, yeah, there shouldn't be any real limitations. Should think of it like the color system and we can probably do anything that we do there.
Cool. And, uh, yeah, I mean, I think that's just enough said right there. It's going to be fun to finally add some decals and eventually, yeah, everybody is asking unit decals and all that, you know, multiple stages, multiple steps, we'll get there. Packages, decal packages, maybe? I don't know, like.
Sure. I don't know. All things are possible, young man.
Do you like mercenary unit package or yeah, who knows? Yep. A lot of fun. We, we'll have a lot of fun with decals and, uh, no dick pics. That's all I'm saying. All right.
No, one comment from chat, you promised decals for May, now it's June. No correction. Now it's July.
Right?
Okay. Next.
Yeah, it's going to be July.
Um, it's going to be July. So we slipped again, failed again. Here we go. Multiple drop decks, multiple drop decks, July patch.
Multiple drop decks. Okay. So what are you talking about?
Well, faction play, you know, so you can, um, you can take your, you have multiple drop decks. We've explained how this works. There's multiple drop ticks for, um, scouting, multiple drop decks for, you know, the counter attack and assault or conquest, you know, uh, help me out here. Help me out here.
What are you talking about?
Invasion, sorry, invasion and counter attack have their, you know, you have your drop decks for that and you have your drop decks for scouting mode. So.
Yep.
And, uh, there's, you're going to get more for free. You're going to get, I think, two per game mode for free instead of just the one. And then there's some other actual ones you can buy.
So for all of us that have frantically been trying to change our drop decks before the allotted time, multiple deck, drop decks will be nice. Definitely improvement.
Yeah. I don't know if there's much to say about that. That's just.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I know. Maybe you guys had this already in the roadmap for July, but, um, there it is confirmed. Um, it's confirmed as I can at this point. So the supply caches is coming in July. Now that's going to be, um, the, as we talked about, you know, the in-game aspect has been removed for now until further testing. So it's just like what you see with other games. Um, ignore it if you want, or do it if you want.
You're talking about the supply crates?
Yeah. So just, it's at the end of the, end of round screen, just like you see with, you know, um, uh, what am I thinking? Um.
Well, a lot of games.
Team Fortress 2, yeah, a lot of games, you know? So, yeah, you know, you spend some of the money on the key and get it and and you see what's in there and you might have a chance to get stuff and you have your grand prizes and your smaller prizes. And it's just kind of a quasi, I guess, grab bag type thing that's always kind of present in the front screen. Um, just one of those, you know, things that you see in other games. That's kind of a tried and true thing. So you can totally ignore it or.
Another layer. Yep. No, I agree. I think it'll be cool.
Okay. Um, in July, we're going to add the standard versions of those 2015 loyalty mechs. You remember the, um, the jump jailing cicada and all the, the.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they're finally coming in just as obviously non-loyalty. They don't have the special skin or the C bill boost, but just the variants to be available for purchase. I think they might start out in the gift store like we've done in the past, but they'll end up in the game and the whole bit. So, um, standard versions of those mechs, which the cicada I think was a, you know, was a favorite of people. And there might be some interest in the others, of course.
That may not be, you know, big news for everybody, but it's funny because I've actually been poked, I don't know, over the last few months at least, um, by quite a few people asking how to get the loyalty mechs. And so I had no idea and that gives me an answer. That's awesome.
Great. So we talked about veridian bog. That's July is the month that that's, those changes are coming out in the bog, although I might just be, I might've just lied. Um, hang on a second. Hmm. Yeah, there was a little bit of tweaks happened to that on our last production meeting. Um, just know this, I guess. You got the forest county in June, but in the coming months, July and August, we're working with, um, terra therma, we're working with veridian bog and we're also working with, crimson straight. Um, crimson straight is pretty much just getting a graphical update, time of date graphical update. I don't, from a gameplay perspective, I think you can kind of think of it as pretty much exactly what it is, just getting a, getting an overhaul. Um, so yeah, so there's again, just more maps like we talked about. So I'll kind of leave that there. Here's another thing that's kind of big. You're going to like this one. Mech saving. July patch. From what I'm being told, I haven't seen it firsthand yet.
You're saying like saving a loadout?
Saving a loadout. So you change your mech significantly, you hit save, um, should be like, in like a second.
What?
Snap your fingers. It's like boom, your mech saved. So this is kind of what I was saying. We've had, I've been able to free up like Nima and the backend engineers really spent the last number of weeks. They're doing a lot of work under the hood to just do a lot of nice quality of life. Finally found some time for these things. So that is, um.
Isn't that news to you?
It's a small thing, but that's epic.
All I'm going to say, Russ, is you just made my night and a whole lot of other, I, the only, the only question I would have is does this faster apply to people that have like 300 mechs? Cause that's one of the reasons, right? That it's slower right now is because first world mech problems. We have too many mechs.
Yeah, first world mech problems, right?
Yeah. I mean, this isn't scheduled yet, but they're working on another thing that is, could be a game changer as well. And that's, uh, just the initial kind of load in for those people that have all those mechs. So I'll just, I don't, I won't say anything more about that yet, cause it's not as far along in the process and can't promise anything yet, but that's just an example of the types of things that, you know, we're, we're working on right now.
Just so everybody's clear, because there's a little confusion in chat and this is really a huge, huge deal. I want to make sure nobody misses this, um, because it's asked actually every town hall over and over and over again. Yes, we're talking save time, significantly reduced save time. Um, and yeah, I, I won't go into details because I don't know anything about it other than I'm one of those peoples that sits there, you know, saving, saving, saving. So.
And this, this is July, Russ.
Yeah.
This is July. Yeah. So July 19th is a July patch date. So we're like a month away from having that.
Oh, that's so freaking awesome. Let's, you know, there's disadvantages to Phil and I not being in the office. We, uh, sometimes don't hear about things till too late.
It's like Christmas in July.
Surprises. Yeah. Hearing the surprises myself, so.
Yeah, it's cool. Um, so confirmation here as I'm reading here that, uh, the reset functionality for the public leader boards is a July, um, feature. Here's another one that's going to catch you guys off guard as well. I think this is another little surprise for even you guys. Um, basically uh, mechs, you know, IK, ground movement IK is, ground alignment IK is going in in July.
We literally were just talking about this on the podcast. Someone was asking about IK because you guys used to have it back in the day. And because of performance reasons, it was taken out. Can you give some light?
Okay.
Inverse chromatics, sorry. Um, it's basically feet being up on a rock and or legs. Your mech doesn't have to be on even ground. So, you know, basically if you're standing there on a rock and your left leg's hanging out, it's no longer floating.
Yeah. I mean, I think, um, I'll just say it like this. I think there was some disagreement. There was a, you know, technical director that isn't here anymore, that was here, that decided to take it out for performance reasons. I think there was some disagreement on that and there was some extra work done on it. And, you know, there was again, because there was a little bit of time now, we've, uh, been able to re-explore it and, um, it's going back in. So, I mean, this is not one of those things that I personally was, you know, cared about, or maybe that's sorry. And I don't think that really played into how long it took or anything, but, um, some people just do, they absolutely love it and they bring it up all the time. Like, oh my God, why'd you take it out? Well, here it is. Thank, here you go. I mean.
It's not a big deal for me as far as gameplay. It's a big deal for me as far as screenshots. I'm always taking screenshots.
Yeah, I guess the movie takers, right?
Yes.
Those guys.
No. Well, it's, it's for everyone.
What I was going to say is it's not a big deal for me, but I've been listening to everybody talk about it forever and asking for it forever.
I will say hopping in here, I think it's important for everyone. One, because it is immersion breaking, right? You've got, why is it that hundred ton atlas left leg floating, right? And obviously it's not going to be like that for much longer. So Russ, thank you for the, uh, present.
But it also raises a question, Russ, because the fact, well, the, the way it is now has been used as somewhat of a reason for not having quad mechs. Now I'm not going to ask the obvious question, but you know what it is and it's going to be coming once IK is back into the game. But anyway, let's move on.
Yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll comment on that. I, to me, the IK conversation never came up with quads. I hate them. I hate them.
You hate quads? You're going to come out and say that?
Okay, eventually when I run out of all mechs on planet Earth.
Why do you hate quad mechs?
I don't know. It's not a mech to me. Never was. I don't know what that thing is. It's a fricking tank.
It's an add app, man. That's what it is.
Yeah, no, no. Um, it's, it's a circus mech.
All right.
Okay. So we'll leave it at that. I just upset some people. So that's, uh, I, I saw a few things in chat. I want to talk about real quick. Yes, I read the chat. They're like, does Russ even read chat? Sometimes when I have a few seconds. Um, someone said, which tech, technical director's gone. I'm not going to throw out his name, but I will say people shouldn't look at this. It's some big, major recent departure. Uh, this is an individual that has been gone for well over a year. Uh, shit, maybe it's even like, I don't know. It's been a long time. It's, you know, this is the call that was made a long time ago, as you know, maybe it's even been a couple of years. Okay, so someone also said, can you bring up the tick rate? It's more important than anything in the world, server tick rate. Um, I'll get clarification from my engineers on this. I don't think I'm misstepping when I say that. Um, there is no increase to the server tick rate. I wanna put that out there. Like our servers that we bought are as high quality servers as you can buy and they're running at top speed, maxed out.
Well, there you have it.
Just, they're just cranked to the nines. There's no power consumption savings, no anything. They're just, they're running at full bore. Can't turn them up anymore. Okay, just throw it out there. So, cause some people think like, oh geez, if you, you know, if you just turn up the tick rate, the hit reg would be better. Well, it's, the tick rate is maxed out.
Uh, yeah, a lot of people saying, what is tick rate? That's the, the problem with these things.
Yeah, it's just. How quickly the server communicates to the game.
Right. So it's on Macs. You got great servers and it's set on Macs. So there you go for all the people that uh, like to talk about tick rate, which there were plenty. But anyway, let's uh, what else? What else coming? More Santa Claus? I guess it's a little early for Christmas, but.
Never.
Never? Um, I mean, those are huge things we got going on so far. Do we, do we wanna take a look at uh, this list we have, Russ?
Well, that, that's June, July. Are we going to August?
No, 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 no. August. We got more.
Why are you skipping stuff, Dern?
Um, wow, man.
I'm impatient. I know, slow down. Yes, I do.
Um. Let's see. Yeah, I'm gonna just, I'm not gonna bring up the mechs and stuff. You guys know when the mechs are coming out. Okay, so assault game mode. This is something we are gonna put into public test significantly as I, as I mentioned. Um, you guys have it in the roadmap as being July. It's, there's no way it's gonna make July. It's finished now, like it's in, I have a map. I have, it's in all the maps actually. We're just starting to play it in the first map now. So that's the kickers. We're just starting to play test it now.
You're talking about an update to assault.
Okay, yeah, the updated assault game mode. So essentially it's just, it's, it's assault still, but it's just way more deep. Like it's just, it's not just one little base on each end. It's a, there's an actual base on each side. There's a capture point which now has new walls and destructible walls surrounding it and new turrets and things. And plus, you got a, you got a tower that's connected to like an old gem that has a UAV effect over the base. And there's another tower that has an old gem connected to it that has like an ECM effect around the base. And there's an airfield tower that brings in a drop ship every minute or so to hover and then leave. So you can destroy the airfield tower, you can destroy the ECM tower, you can destroy the UAV tower. Ultimately, you wanna capture the base. So there's a lot going on here and we're trying to get it balanced. That's still a 15 minute game mode. You know, like it's still a quick play game mode. Um, and we're just starting to test it now in Polar Highlands and already deciding like, well, this shit changed, that shit changed. So it's, you know, when you're talking about a cutoff in like a week or something for the July patch, there's just no way. So we're gonna push that to August. Um, no guarantee it'll make August, but I think in the month of July there'll be a public test for it. So you guys can play it. Um, as you can imagine, this game mode more than any other one requires a significant amount of per map testing. I mean, all game modes do, but this game mode more so than any more, any other because you know, you can't just say, well, here's two equal distances. Let's put the cap points here and here. It's about, okay, fine. Put the bases here and here, but how much natural, you know, protection is there and how many extra walls we have to put up on this map, on this side, but on that side? So there's a lot more balancing goes into it and heck, I think there's still a chance that the whole thing could be turfed potentially if it just isn't working out. I mean, I think that's an unlikely scenario. I think there's something there that should be great, um, but it's, it needs a lot of test. So until it's ready, there's just no point in putting it out. So right now, target date is August. And uh, you know, who knows? If we do it right, it could potentially be a game changer. It could be like the de facto game mode for MWO Public Cube, like for sure. So I think it has that potential. But we'll see. It's a long ways off still. But I mean, August isn't very far off, but you know what I mean?
Well, as we were saying at the beginning of this, to, to some people, that is an eternity, but uh, yeah, I mean, that, that's right around the corner and the fact that it's going up on PTS, that's gonna be awesome. I can't wait to uh, give that a test.
Yeah, that was gonna be my spin. It is coming out in July, just in PTS, not live.
Right. Well, that's good. That's something. Like I said, step one is better than step zero. So uh, yeah, that's huge. A lot of good info coming. I'm gonna let you find the next topic while I uh, peruse this chat. Everybody, game modes, game modes, game modes. Um, asymmetrical game modes, people are asking about that.
Yeah, we're working on one other game mode. It's so early, I won't even try to describe it to you, but it is asymmetrical.
Cool.
Um, yeah. And uh, it's, it'll be very different from anything we have. Very experimental. So
I like that.
But we are, we are, we are developing and testing it. And if it works out, maybe even the union class drop ship will show up. So we'll see.
Ooh, so you hear that, guys?
Even just as a, as a, as a thing, right? I'm not saying that the union class is gonna be like heavily involved in the game mode, but just it showing up and leaving, I think is gonna be, that's, that'd be really cool in and of itself.
Well, that was actually asked a lot, asymmetrical game mode. I mean, literally just tons of inquiries about that. So there you have it. Asymmetrical game mode being worked on right now, experimental, potential for a new drop ship, all kinds of fun stuff. Yeah, union class. Awesome.
Okay, so in August, if everything goes well, and this is another PTS item, and the August patch is August 23rd. Um, the uh, the new energy draw system, it's a very bad name, but I'm gonna call it that for now. Um, energy draw system.
Heat scale.
Essentially, it's, it's a replacement for heat scale.
Right.
So they don't even know what heat scale is. Ghost heat. Okay, it's a replacement for ghost heat. Um, we overcame a technical challenge we had. We had a technical challenge where, I guess, just to put it simply, we we wanted to have, we, we were playing around with the idea of having penalties and even like cooldown timers and things based on certain criteria. That was deemed to be a heavy risk for client server relationships and potential hit reg you know, problems or at least perceived problems. And so we had, we had to do away with some of those for the time being, but what we have left still is is I like it because it's very, on the one hand, it's very simple. It's like, hey, MechWarrior, you fire weapons, you generate heat. The weapons have a cooldown and you generate heat. And when you run up, you get, you know, you get too much heat, you shut down. So it's similar, if we're staying we're staying at that basic level to start out with. But the system has a lot more potential to go a lot deeper if things work out. Like a lot more heat effects and things if we wanna go there. Uh, but the first step is very similar to where it is with heat scale and it still generates, it, it still deals with heat. But I guess, I mean, the simplest way of putting it is to say, it's a system that you can't just step around like you can with heat scale. Uh, with heat scale, it's like.
Loopholes.
Loophole. So it's like, okay, great. I'll just fire five mediums and, you know, two large.
And one whatever, yeah.
Whatever. And so you get 50 plus alphas and you get around it. This you can, of course, because every weapon has energy. And I guess the concept is like, you're drawing energy from your reactor core. Your reactor core only has so much energy. And if you go over that, you're taxing the reactor of your mech too much. And therefore it's having to work way too hard and generate all sorts of excess heat. So it still boils down to an, an excess heat penalty, but you really can't get around it because it might be simply put, you know, based on the damage output of the weapon, although there'll be, of course, um, it's not that simple. There's other weapons, we, gausses to whatever that, you know, there's, there's a lot of balance work to do, but if we can get there to the balance work, then it's, it's really gonna I think it's really gonna do what I guess we want, which is to limit those high pinpoint alphas truly this time and to um, you know, reward players with diverse builds, you know, people that can master the art of uh, whether chain firing, let's see more chain firing or uh, firing a combination of, you know, ballistics and lasers and just you know, shoot those, then shoot those. And then rather than just the, I sit behind a rock, I poke out I alpha, I go back behind the rock. I wait. I poke out I alpha, I go behind the rock. Um, to me, it's less interesting gameplay. Others would disagree. But I think what we all agree on is that boating is not great. Boating is not good for the game. And this is a much better system than heat scale. So I, I don't know. I mean, is this, I guess the question I'll ask you guys is, is this something that you think everyone is universally excited about? Or is there still a faction out that just says, let us alpha anything we want without any system?
I'll let Phil go into more detail about this, but you know, even when we give away free mechs, you got people saying it's the wrong free mech. So that's never gonna change. But Phil, what do you think this, the implement, uh, ah, implications are gonna be?
I mean, I think at the end of the day, when I look at this, just for me personally, there's two things that fall short with the current ghost heat. And one, workaround, just like you said. So does this new system fix that? So you can do X amount of weapon combos and you can't get around the penalties. So you already said it does that. Cool. And then also, the reason it's called ghost heat is it displayed properly to the player. So is there an in-game, in the mech lab portion? Does it tell you how this system works? And also in, you know, the mech UI? And so if it fixes those two things, I don't even, why even call it energy drain system? You can call it heat scale 2.0, whatever you wanna call it. But for me, does it fix those two things? Now, the effect it has on the battlefield, I think that's, that's something that.
People in chat are going.
I think you can, I think you can theory craft this or that, but you don't have the exact numbers. Um, will it change? You know, let's just say whatever loadout, is it gonna affect your GOS five mediums or uh, UAC or four UAC tens? We don't really know what the effect is gonna be. So I think you have a lot of people that are optimistic, but also they're leery of any change, right? Because it's like, do we really need this? But for me, I look at it as, does it fix those two things? Cause that's my, my two main gripes with ghost heat. And if it does that, then it's at least better than the current system. Uh, other than that, I think there's just a lot of testing that has to be done. Um, and from a player's standpoint, I think a lot of people are apprehensive. Um, and uh, you know.
Well, we'll get them involved and they'll get to play it. And, you know, I'm sure it'll go through some revisions, but yeah, I mean, I guess uh,
Would it be okay?
I think it'll be an improvement. I mean, you know, I think it'll be better.
Cause, cause I think a lot of people, and obviously you have multiple skill levels and experience levels out there. Um, one thing to be said is there's always gonna be min-max. I think some people have this like, you know, visor on that.
There's some way to fix it.
Yeah, like there's, there's always, any, anytime you, like even, even if you're like a hardcore fan of BattleTech and you're you know, switching out your AC10 for something else, guess what? You just min-maxed it. That's what min-maxing is. And so I just feel like as far as the balance, whether or not alphas, whether or not sustained DPS, will, will it shift to close range brawling, long range? I think there's just a lot of questions and the cool thing is, and I, and I see a lot of positive, uh, even in the comp scene out there is when balance changes like this coming patch happens, is they're gonna adapt and shift and, you know, um, you know, sometimes you just have to remove thyself from the equation and, and see where things land. So as far as uh, uh, this energy draw system or heat scale 2.0, whatever you wanna call it. Um, I think it has some big implications in the game. Well, but there are some might not view it as good. Uh, some might view it as awesome. So I think, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see, I guess.
Uh, Russ, any chance this showing up on PTS or is it gonna go in first?
Yeah, no, I said in the beginning, this, the, the two big things that I think you'll see in the PTS in the next, you know, over the next month or so will be um, the new assault game mode and this.
Cool.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, can, is, do we have time or do you, do you want to even speculate? You, you mentioned at the beginning that this could, you know, if it works out, it could go deeper and have more, um, you know, implications in the map.
I think there's a lot of people that would say, hey, Russ, you know, and, you know, and tabletop or whatever and like, you know, if you get
Here you go, Mario.
X amount of heat, then, you know, things happen. Like, okay, if you get so hot, your mech will lose down. If you get so hot, this happens or ammo explosions. And, you know, I've been leery about that from the beginning and I've said on here before, why? And I think everyone understands why and they can't really argue with me on it. Like, I mean, there's no doubt that MechWarrior 9 is a very, is a complex game. I mean, it's, it is. It is what it is. And we've never hidden that fact. And in fact, part of me says, please appreciate it. All you hardcore players, people listening, because um, you're never gonna get another MechWarrior game like this again. I mean, regardless, like when the time ends, when Pran is making, you know, MechWarrior products and, and we no longer have a license or whatever happens. And hopefully that never happens until I'm like 60, but it's gonna happen. It's not our license. And it's gonna go back to someone and they are gonna make you Mech assault. They're gonna make you the game that can sell millions of units. That's it. They, they can't make a game like we've made it. There's no way. A big company cannot make a game like we've made it because they can't make money and they just, it's not gonna get made. They have to make a game that has a chance of selling three, four, five, six million unit copies. So they don't make it. That's just the way that it is now in the game industry. So you, you're never gonna get a core MechWarrior game like this again. We've always been, so it, that, the downside of that is, is like it, it can never be mass. It can never be huge. It, it's, we know who the audience is. And we try hard to grow that audience a little bit and try to bring in new players and try to train them, but it kind of in a way is what it is. And that's fine. It works for us as a small company and, and we're happy to be here. Thank you all for playing and supporting us. Um, but even still, even though I know who the market is and who the players are, I'm still nervous about making it more complex and saying, now here's something else for you to think about and you know, deal with in the battlefield. It's like, okay, not only now do I have to look at my weapons and my weapon groups and my heat. It's like, now I have to deal with the fact that once I get to 80% heat, my mech slows down by 10% or whatever. It's like, oh, you're running hot. It's a lot. It's in, so I, the jury's still out. I think there's probably the majority of people in this town hall, in this chat right now are probably saying, I want it because um, you know, we're the hardcore guys.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, there's 500 people in this town hall or whatever the number is right now. It's, that is you know, a small portion of a percentile of the total amount of people playing the game. So anyhow, that's just, that's my thinking. But yes, the system has that potential much more than ever before of if, if this does work out and gets established and say, okay, great, you know, this is a nice improvement over heat scale. You can't really step around it and it's, it's working much better. Then we could add another layer that says, okay, at this heat level, slow down everyone's mech by, and once you're running in the, maybe even just like, once you're running in the 90 plus percentile, like if you're riding that line of shutting down, you know, you have this X, you know, detriment as well, like slowing down or whatever. Yeah, we could, we could add those things as a next step if, if, if that's, you know, I guess what we all think we should do.
Yep, every little thing has all kinds of uh, you know, implications to gameplay and, and business and so forth. A lot of stuff that people don't know. You don't know what you don't know. But anyway, let's move on. You got another one? Got another one? More goodies?
Yeah, I, I always have more. Let's see. Actually, that's, I mean, that's pretty close to it as far as patches and the rest of the stuff I've kind of touched on. Um, for instance, this going to, if we're looking at August, uh, there's, you know, small things like you buy a mech and you don't have a mech, we had a prompt you to buy one. Just a few other kind of quality of life things that are coming to the forefront finally. Um, looks like they'll have another deco pack in August, but that's obvious. Decal, I slipped up there. Uh, I was trying so hard not to slip up.
I thought saying decal was slipping. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, that's, I guess I'll stop there. Next, we're kind of slipping into September and stuff, so um, I, I have other things, other topics I think that are really interesting to people that we should get into, but that was the kind of summer patches. And I think there's a lot there and I hope everyone's pleased with that. And then you know, if you have some comments or questions you wanna talk about a bit more, that's fine. Otherwise, we can slip into a couple of other things, you know, that I've written down here.
Why don't we scan chat for questions regarding specifically what we just talked about? We spent the last couple hours talking about the summer. Uh, you know, the June, July, August patches. If you have any questions out there, go ahead and uh, pop them into chat. We'll all uh, scan them and so forth. And then after we finish with that, we'll take another five minute bio break and then we'll come back and we'll talk potentially the rest of the year, the remainder of the year and, and maybe Metcon, whatever, stuff that's coming up. So uh, you see anything there? Are you watching?
I, I did have something earlier that someone asked Russ when you were talking about the um, new heat system and all that. Um, what sort of timeframe would people expect like a post to be made, like a command post with a little bit more details, like, you know, numbers and this, this is how it works and stuff? Around that timeframe?
Uh, which, which system?
On the heat scale.
New heat system.
Energy drain on it.
Yeah, probably we would put up a post um, about fairly simultaneous with when it goes to PTS. And, you know, right now, that's still probably a couple of weeks away. And then that's what we'd probably aim to do. So people can go there, read it and get a gist of how it should work, then go play it.
That sounds good. Uh, can we get heat? No, no, that's not gonna happen. We'll get to that one, Igor. We may have covered these topics well enough.
Some people are asking about the maps. You've already talked about that map. So you guys are gonna have to re-listen to that.
Yep, like I said before, this will be up on YouTube and podcast format. Yep, like I said before, this will be up on YouTube in podcast format, so if you miss anything, uh, I'm sure it'll be on Reddit too, broken down.
Well, um-
Hard case that's coming.
Yeah, let's, um-
You wanna do a quick bio and then come back?
Uh, okay, fine, sure, let's, let's do that. And then, um, I've got some major things to talk about. I know everyone's gonna want to talk about faction play and say, "What the hell's going on?" Um, I want to talk about retrofit skins. I want to talk about Metcon, of course. I want to talk about the tournament. I want to talk about, um, hack, cheat detection, and all these sort of subjects that people want to talk about. So let's, um, let's come back. Don't go away. That's what they call, uh, what do they call that in radio business? Stick around, because when we come back, we're gonna talk about those things. So don't go anywhere.
And of course, guys, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who came out and is watching this. Thank you guys so much for the support. Again, if you are new to the channel and you're enjoying this topic of discussion, don't forget to click that follow button. Also check us out on Twitter, Facebook, YouTube, all the things. Guys, we'll be right back in a few minutes, and don't go anywhere. All right, guys, welcome back. I'd like to say again, thank you for everyone showing up. We are doing a town hall with Russ Bullock, and I've got Darren here. We're just, uh-
Hey, hey.
Wrapping up a few things. Don't forget, guys, if you enjoyed those animations, you can check all those out. Got a playlist, ASN, all systems nominal. Drop that link in the chat.
Yeah, those are classics. Uh, I love the fact that those are classics now. You know, we've been around, and those have been around for so long, uh, they're, they're favorites of a lot of people. Anyway, um, yes, this is another town hall meeting. We've gone a little bit over two hours now, and we've pretty much covered all of the updates for the summer, the summer months. Um, again, if you've missed anything, this will be up on YouTube, uh, as quickly as possible, tonight, tomorrow morning, as well as, uh, in podcast format. And I'm sure there will be a breakdown of everything on Reddit, if there's not already. I'm guessing there is already. But anyway, um, we are moving in to kind of the post-summer months, and what's will be coming up in development after that. Of course, this isn't as set in stone as everything that we've been talking about before. But I'll let Russ get into it. We did mention before the break, um, some things that we'll be talking about here in the next few minutes. Faction play, retrofit skins, Metcon, the tournament, of course, and going right along with that cheat detection. So Russ, you wanna kick it off?
Great, so let's start with retrofit skins, because it's a small subject. Uh, we finally found that person that hired someone a little bit ago. Um, things are well underway, finally. And, um, I, it wasn't listed here, because I don't think it's quite confirmed yet, but I thought that you may even see, I want to say the Jenner, like, there's a mech coming in July that will have all of its retrofit skins caught up. And when I say retrofit, that is, that equals essentially, it means that, it's like the latest mech we've released. If you've noticed, like, for the last six months, that when a mech comes out, maybe even longer than six months, it has everything, like faction skins, like every skin functionality, and even the hero can take off the hero skin if it wants to put on something else, like full functionality. Even the special version can swap stuff off. Retrofit means it comes out with full functionality. So a lot of the original mechs, none of the original mechs, you know, prior to Resistance 1 or whatever, have any faction skins. So they're gonna start being released here pretty quick. I think July, maybe even have one. Then after that, every month, you'll see four or five mechs come out with full, um, you know, full functionality and full retrofit functionality for, across the board. So that's coming. I think it's gonna take till the end of the year to get them all out, but by the end of the year, we'll have, we should be totally caught up. And that'll mean that, you know, free up that, that resource, then, instead of doing retrofits, we'll be like, "Okay, let's create a new skin." Or let's create a, a skin that only goes on the atlas, you know, whatever, like particular variant skins. That's something we've wanted to do for a while. It's like, well, let's make skins that are like, and that's less work, because it doesn't have to work across the board, but it might be something that's just specific to a particular mech or particular chassis and, you know, just, there's a lot of stuff we want to do, and even just new skins that are global. But, um, we should be able to start working on those things in the new year. But by the end of this year, all the mechs should be, and throughout, maybe the mech you like, even by August or September, will be, have full, full skin functionality.
Excellent, yeah, I kind of get spoiled as far as the new mechs go, and then I'll be playing an old one and going there to change it. I'll be like, "Oh, yeah." So that'll be nice. That'll be nice.
I just want Steiner KMO for my Skada. Is that too much to ask?
Yes, it is. No Steiner KMO for your Skada. No, that'll be good. So by the end of the year, um-
Okay, um-
Faction play?
Yeah, let's talk, uh, well, let's talk about some of these smaller ones here. It's not smaller, but the, the amount I can say are smaller.
Right.
Okay, so cheat detection.
Yes.
Now, I'm not gonna spend a long time preambling about how careful I have to be.
Yep.
Because what a cat and mouse game this is with people that create the programs. Um, I just will say very briefly, and then I'm not gonna repeat myself, just for the hope that no one will hear me. Do we have a detection method? Yes. Is it proven to work? Yes. Um, have we found some cheaters? Yes. And I banned them, just before I went on town hall.
Wait, you're saying you banned people tonight?
Yes. Um, it was not a huge list. At this point, I'm not naming and shaming them. And I'm not naming them, shaming them right now. It's, it's a debate, one of those things that people will say, "Well, don't name shame, dis shame." You know, I generally come out on the side of, "Yeah, you should." And I'm still kind of of that opinion, but I'm withholding for the moment because, for the reasons of detection. Uh, we have a tournament going on, and I will say that, um, no, you won't see any teams disqualified at this moment. We are watching a lot of teams, and the amount of cheaters we found has been smaller than anticipated. And I do not believe that's, um, an indication of the detection method. I don't, truly don't. Full confidence in it. Anyhow, I don't want to, I, I feel really anxious talking about it, because I want it to continue to work, but I know it's been a really long time without an update on that. And I thought, I owed you that, and trust me, I wish I hadn't even almost said that, just for the purposes of keeping everything, this is a very sensitive subject for us to be able to continue to detect. So, and usually, it doesn't matter really what I say. People decide whether what they want to believe or not. Um, but there have been some bans that come down tonight, and we are watching the tournament matches. We are spectating them, and we are detecting them. And I'm confident that if any team players do use something in the tournament match, that it'll be, it'll be spotted. So, believe what you will, that's, um, I'm gonna just switch subjects now, because, um, that's, I don't want to give out any more hints as to what we do and how we do it, and-
Totally understand.
Yeah, so it's, you know, like usual, I think people will be skeptical, because they, they, they-
Really whatever, right?
It's a witch hunt, they suspect everybody. Well, um-
Well, we all know now, Phil, when you try and stream after this, uh, town hall, and you can't log in-
Skada, master race, dude.
We'll be watching.
We're taking over, Skadas everywhere.
Yep. Big Brother's watching, folks, so, uh, no cheaters, thank you.
Yeah, um, I want to talk a little bit about Metcon. Um, if you guys are gonna come get your tickets, I know that the, the, um, the, I guess the biggest thing that we're missing for you guys out there is that, um, you know, what's gonna happen at town hall? Like, what's gonna go on? Like, what's on the agenda? What's the schedule? I know, and I haven't delivered that to you yet, and we, I might, I will try to fairly soon. Um, but I can say that a lot of things you might expect, like, will Catalyst be there? Yes. Are they gonna be selling stuff? I believe so. Um, is Hairbrain Schemes gonna be there? When I talked to Jordan verbally, so I haven't talked to him in a little while, but verbally about a month ago, he says, "Yes, they'd love to be there." And he said that they should have a playable version of their game by then, to be there.
Oh, shit.
So it's just, it's just a verbal confer, uh, confirmation, so I'm a little nervous stating it, but I, you know, he did say that they should be, I mean, you know, by then, they should be, they're only, well, I don't know, I'm not really sure about their game, but there's, you know, what are they? Within six months for sure, or less of their release, I believe. So they said they could have a playable version, and they'd have that there. Uh, of course, I'm gonna have a stage time where we talk a lot about, there's gonna be a lot of reveals about MechWarrior Online, so we'll have that. Uh, we'll definitely have the tournament, of course, all the finals and everything. You got all the food and booze.
Phil and I will be there.
Yeah, the things I'm working on, yes, and Darren and Phil will be there. Um, and we'll have some other personalities there, of course. And now, and I think there's gonna be more, and I truly believe, I haven't mentioned all of it. I think we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna try to create a few other, well, even at our own party here, we had a number of other things, as you know. And so there'll be a lot of other smaller things, and I, I still would like to have a few, well, I don't know if you call them workshops, or speeches, or like various things. Essentially, you know, from noon until midnight, it's gonna be packed with things to do. So I'd love to get everybody out there and fill that place up. Um, I know it might be coming from a long ways away, but book soon. Um, get, get your tickets before, you know, flights get more expensive, or, or, you know, anything like that. And I guess, um, besides the agenda, you know, like exactly what's gonna happen there, because, oh, well, just, you know, let us know what else is maybe preventing you from booking. We do have quite a few already, uh, but there's still, there's still a fair number of tickets left, so, um, I wanna, I definitely want to, I just want to have a great event, right? I want to make sure it's, you know, just, you know, lively and just exactly what you guys would all, you know, hope for from, you know, like a one-day Metcon event. This isn't like a, you know, three-day, like everyone's sitting around in pajamas, playing like BattleTech, you know, that type of thing, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a really lively event for a full 12 hours, so, um, yeah, let me know, I guess, what your biggest questions are about, like, Metcon, and, you know, what you're, what you're wanting to hear, I guess, before you come or whatnot.
Well, first of all, uh, the Steam release party was fricking off the hook. Um, you know, I've been to a lot of industry, uh, release parties, launch parties, et cetera, and even some from the, the biggest developers or distributors, whatever. Um, that was an awesome event. I'm so looking forward to this, not only because it's bigger, but just hanging out with, again, with the PGI crew and, and the, you know, fanatic fans that come and just, I had a great time. I'm looking forward to it again. Um, there was a couple questions in there regarding, at least one, I saw Igor was wondering about, um, he was, I guess, having issues with the ticket sale portal not working in his country, which was Russia. Um, do you know of any other issues with certain countries trying to purchase and not being able to?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess, you have to use it, I think I may have talked about this with the guys a little bit. It really does require a credit card, and for people in North America, that's sort of like a, a no-brainer type thing, but, you know, for people in Europe, apparently it's, you know-
Not as standard.
Yeah, it's very different. And so that is one of those challenges. Um, I'll bring it up at our next Metcon meeting. We have them weekly, and I'll, I'll ask them again for an update, uh, see if there's, um, a way that we can tell you guys about, like, hey, well, if you, I don't know, we'll have to talk to the portal, um, and the people that are selling tickets, and see if there's like, hey, for European people, like, or, you know, those that don't have a credit card, whatever, like, what can we do? And, um-
Isn't like phone cards a way around that or something? I know Europe has some kind of way to get around that, but yeah, I mean, obviously, this isn't something-
Yeah, it makes me think- Yeah, it makes me think that there must be a way, like even if the ticket people can't really accommodate us. Maybe we create like a Metcon ticket. I'm just thinking about this on the fly, right in my head, so maybe I'm talking up, you know what, but. You know, talk to the guys, but maybe like the, the gift store on the M W website has a ticket. And you buy the ticket and then we take the money and we buy the ticket, you know, from the ticket people. So I'm sure there's something we can do, but I just don't know. I mean, I'm happy to do that work if it's a significant problem. Um, or, you know, I don't want to help anybody out that wants to come. I want to try and help them, so, uh, but, you know. Certainly if there's a, if there's a number of you that are having that problem, we can maybe do that.
Well, Wiki is saying he used PayPal and it worked fine. Uh, Igor from Russia is saying he's just getting an access denied. He's not having any problems with credit cards, so he is using a credit card. So we will look into that Wiki and I'll stay on top of it as well, um, and, uh, yeah, we'll work on that. So, Metcon, I think that for the most part covers, it's gonna be an amazing event. I hope to see you all out.
Yeah, don't wait. Book your ti- book your tickets now, like, because I, I think a lot of our decisions on like.
What's happening?
Yeah, like if the place is gonna sell out, you know, maybe we'll do this or that or just. I wanna, I wanna get a good sense if we're gonna sell this thing out and, and trust me, I don't know for sure if we will, like. I mean, it was a stretch for us to get this big venue. I mean, it's a big venue. It's, you know, we're gonna put a thousand people in there and that's. That's a pretty big venue, so, I mean, if we end up with, you know, four or 500 in there, to me is not some kind of. You know, failure. That's still the biggest party we've ever had, bigger than the San Francisco launch event, so. But I want, yeah, I'd love to have a thousand in there. Let's fill it up, um.
Yeah, bottom line is the more people that bu- uh, book earlier or buy their tickets early, the more chance there will be for more, uh, you know. Greater things that the.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm still considering like a live band at the end and stuff like that. I just, but you know, it's early, so.
I am, I'm working Russ on the band.
It's already June, so we're like six months from the party, right?
Yep.
Or less.
I'm keeping my eye on you, Darren.
You, yeah.
Yeah, you and your rum and cokes, man.
It wasn't just that, it was also the stroll, yeah, but anyway, I had so much fun. I had so much.
It was, it was a blast.
Okay, so as far as faction play goes.
Yes.
Um, it's come out, we're doing these tweaks in this patch. But, um, we had the big event in the beginning and stuff and it was super lively and essentially. I think what it boils down to in everyone's case is saying, I mean, what I, what I get mostly is like. You know, it's, it's, it's the only game mode I play and all I want to play is faction play, but it's very difficult. To live in that game mode because. You know, it takes a lot of players to, I mean, we just talked about it. We're, you know, we're a niche product, yet we've got like a 10 faction game mode. That's another one of those things that you just see like, okay, we tried to reduce the number of buckets as much as we could with phase three. And it's, I think it does work better, but we've got to go further, so. Essentially, the goal right now is to say, okay, how can we essentially not throw away the work we did, meaning. All the stuff that's good, like the earning of MC and the planet tags and the, you know, the faction, the war planning, just the, all the contract system, like everything we. Did, like, keep it all, but somehow. Reduce those buckets down to Clan versus IS, but do it in a way that it's Clan versus IS, yet people can still kind of exist. In their factions and do their stuff and that's, I don't know if that's possible or not and that's where we're living right now and what we're thinking about. And I know a lot of the faction play players have. Um, a lot of ideas and so I guess for the first time ever, I'm gonna officially acknowledge right here and tell and I've told Darren this and say. I'm willing to have, um, a very small round table conversation with myself. Darren. Phil, um, and, uh. A number of, whatever the right number is, to have the right kind of intimate conversation, whether that's. Four, six, eight, or 10, or whatever, of the most prominent. Um, unit leaders in the community that have a lot of experience with the game mode and have a lot of ideas with the game mode. Um, to have a very intimate round table conversation over team speak or something, spend a couple of hours. Um, discussing it and gathering ideas and as long as we're focused in the right way, I mean, there's. And well, this is, you know, ground rules I can set at the time when we have the meeting. So it's not like, hey, throw all this stuff away and, you know, start on this two year plan, but if we can focus in on, okay, here's where the game mode is. Here's how we can maybe, we can reduce the buckets down, but still maintain the, you know. The vast majority of the, of the work to date and get it so we're really, you know, reducing the, and it might not be just, just Clan versus IS. There might be other ideas that come up to say, well, you know, maybe this is how we. You know, reduce the number of buckets, you know, based on, you know, some factors that we discuss of Clan versus IS factors or. Um, maybe going into timelines, so it's just a, you know, a third section more with just the. Industry or factions fighting and then it's maybe just the clans's coming in up against, you know. Maybe it's reduced to just Wolf versus F R for a while and then there's, there's a number of ways we could do it. Um, but that's, it's a, it's a conversation I'm willing to have, so I think we can do that fairly soon. I mean, we need to, we'll try to make something happen like in the month of June to have that round table conversation and to, uh. Try to, try to, you know, my goal with faction play is, I mean, it's still a true statement that it's never done. We'll continue to work on it forever. Um, and tweak it forever, but. We're not at a tweak stage yet, you know, like I think you'll probably like hearing me say that, that we still haven't found.
We're still in the construction stage.
We're not in a settled in phase. I want to find that settled in phase or say, oh my God, this works. It's not perfect. But it really works. It works really well, so now let's talk about the fine tuning and tweaks and adjustments and.
Yep.
You know, this, that and the other, but no, I'm not happy. I don't think we've, I think it's fun when we have big events and it's. There's moments where I say, oh my God, this is really great, but it hasn't found a point where it settles in and just kind of works really well all the time. And that's, that's the goal. That would be the goal of the conversation.
Yeah, and, and we haven't discussed this much further beyond what we just said, so, uh, guys, just. Stay tuned. There will be more info for that as we move forward and, yeah, I know everybody's unit wants to be represented, so we're gonna figure all that out. And, uh, more info to come. And I think somebody meant something else when they said unit there in chat. I know what you're getting at. So we talked Metcon, we talked tournament, we talked cheat detection. Alright, I think we covered those. Topics, everything we said. Now, do we want to look over and see if there's anything else we want to talk about on this document? Before we all go have our dinners and rest for the weekend.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna, I mean, we, we took your guys' questions and we're focused on, I guess, the various content. Um, I'll make a few. Um, I'm gonna take a few, you know, glasses to here and see if there's anything else that we really haven't already covered tonight.
Yep, yep, um, obviously we talked about game modes, uh, new asymmetrical game mode coming.
Here's one, I mean, the private lobbies, um. Yes, you're gonna get your stock. Stock mode.
Did you hear that?
Can you, can you repeat that one more time?
Yes, on this delivery time. I think there's a chance it would be in the summer. Uh, I think there's a chance it'd be in maybe August. August, 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 September, August. I'm not really sure. August, September. Say September to be safe. I don't know. It's coming. Uh, like I told you and like I negotiated with you kind of in past town halls, it'll be fairly basic. Because this is one of those things where you could open a can of worms and spend months developing it, like months and months and months. But what we are gonna do, I believe, out the gate is to say, there's a button that you press that says stock mode. And there's this, I even went, went a little bit further than that and says, there's a sub button that says quirks or no quirks. So you can say, yeah, this is a stock mode match and we want no quirks. Now. From that point on, it's up to you, the players, meaning obviously there's a pretty big difference between a stock, quirkless, hunchback 4G. And a storm crow, right? And that's not something that you're gonna, we're not providing all those details like no storm crows, yes, those, not those. Those, these, da, 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 that's a million options that take months to, you know, build that whole system out. But stock and quirkless, so you as the team captains can say, hey, Johnny, you, you can't bring the storm crow. Like, we're limiting, we're limiting this to, you know, thirty, thirty, twenty-five mechs or whatever, and so. You know, you're gonna see your Jenners and Atlases and whatever and just like, uh, but then you know, the advantages. Over everyone just saying, hey, guys, you can only bring these mechs, because you could do that right now, of course, but you're saying, well, what's the difference? Well, of course, the difference is. You know that Johnny didn't bring all double heat sinks in his hunchback, you know, because it's impossible for him to bring them. Because they'd be hidden to the end user. He'd be running around with what looks like a stock build, but running double heat sink, so no. It'll, doesn't, and I guess the, what people are probably wondering is, no, you don't have to have your mech all saved out in stock mode. It'll just load it in stock. So you could have a hunchback 4G all decked out with ferrofibrous enough steel and whatever and the double heat sinks and all that, but. When you load in, it's just gonna be like, you know, original hunchback 4G. And quirkless, say no quirks, so again, you guys get it, I think, but just overstated it. Then you have to run the rules after that and say, okay, guys, you know, we're only taking these 15 chassis and we know that you're all running stock.
Everybody, uh, talking about poor Johnny there. I think that's awesome. Uh, that's going to be great. Obviously, there's been a lot of people asking that for a long time. Um, so it'll be fun to get that in. Now, also, uh, I just want to touch on this because I know it's not gonna be discussed in depth tonight. For those of you asking about, um, a colorblind mode, uh, uh, another colorblind mode other than what we have, because. I know there's issues. The problem is, well, anyway, Russ isn't gonna be able to answer that tonight. I'm going to, uh, myself talk with Tina. And try and get some answers on just, you know, more in-depth colorblind modes or whatever. It's not being ignored. I will, uh, one way or another, get that info back to you, but that's just not gonna happen tonight.
Um, these guys don't want a mech announcement tonight, right?
No, they've, they've not been saying anything about.
Way too soon. Okay, so let's not do that. We'll hold off on that.
What about?
It, it sure is, it sure is sexy, though. Just gonna let them know that.
Yeah, well, you didn't have to, you didn't have to brag like that, Phil.
Oh, I've, I've been doing it all week. Actually, I've just been like, yeah, you guys have no idea. It's fantastic.
Um, I, there's one thing I saw in chat that I, I do want to mention and. I'm getting old, so I have to scroll up to see what that was again. What was that again? Oh my God.
It's, chat's going too fast or not.
Yeah, I talked about, uh, no mech and, oh, okay, now I remember what it was. Um, oh boy.
What about what I have?
We debated this. Sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
I was gonna say, like, we debated this all day, whether we'd mention anything, because. I really want you guys to come to, um, Metcon and I want you to come and get some really, really. You know, there needs to be something there that's really fresh and really new and there will be, absolutely, at the announcement point, but it's just a matter of. Is that the first time they hear about it or is that the first time they see it? Like what? So.
I kind of feel like you need to touch on it a little bit tonight.
There's one aspect of M W L that. I still feel is, um, well, pretty much, well, placeholder, you know, it's. You know, the original placeholder stuff and that is. First time I see it in chat, I'll say it. What's the, what's the last placeholder aspect? No, I'm opening myself up to like.
They've already said it a bunch of times.
Okay, so the mech skill tree. The mech skill tree is.
Boom.
Basic, very basic and. I guess I'm just gonna say this. It's, we're working, we're gonna work on it right away, like we're starting on it and this is not, this, this isn't like. Oh, it's a little bit better. Oh, there's different screens, um. I really feel like this is a game changer, like this is something that could potentially add.
Okay, stop. No more. Can't give it away?
No, but I think they get the point that it's, um, from a character progression standpoint, it's, you know, it's. It's really not comparable. It could be, you know, multiple times deeper. Um, and, and, and the way for us to actually reintroduce that. Information warfare stuff that people weren't thinking about, not just that, there's a lot of things. And so there's no doubt you can realize this would have repercussions across everything from quirks to, to weapons, to information warfare, to. Everything, character to mechs, so, um, there's a lot of work for us to do, a lot of work. I'll leave it at that for now. As far as the release timeframe, don't let your, you know, minds run wild. This is a large, large undertaking, um. You know, it's, it's gonna take a while to do it and, and there's no doubt that those that come to Metcon. Uh, will be rewarded with a major update.
Yeah, I mean, I, I only know very little and I'm super excited about it, but. Yeah, let's be realistic. We're not talking about the next few months here on that specific topic, so there you go. Everybody was asking.
Um, Russ, I've got the next question, if you don't mind. This is, this is personal to heart. It's on, it's on the dock, though, and, and you're cool with it. The chat. Can we, uh, can we?
Yeah, um. Uh, so there, oh dear, I think I, I think it was in the, supposed to be in the, in the summer patch months, but I forget which one. Oh, shoot, I, I, I think in the, in the May or, or sorry, the, uh, July or August patches. Um, there is one major upgrade coming to the, uh, in-game chat where, um. Well, there's, 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 there's scrolling functionality. I think there's a way to get the mouse so that you can scroll up and see the history of the chat that hap- was happening in-game. Um, but. We're also putting the final touches on the design right now that would see. Chat window, um, be present on all screens in the front end. So in order for us to do that, you know, reasonably quickly without having to redesign the entire front end. Would be to have it kind of be a floating chat message that you could minimize. Um, down, like kind of down to where the LFG bar and social bar is or to bring up and you could have it up at all times, so. Now, when I say all the times, I'd be a little careful, maybe not, I'm not so sure about when you're searching. For a match, maybe. I need to ask about that. That was just brought up tonight, but other than searching, yeah, I mean, Mech Lab, wherever. Be there, like, oh, look at, you know, I'm in Mech Lab screwing around with a mech and my. You know, faction saying, boom, we gotta hit invasion right now or whatever, um, but yeah, there's so, we're, we're working on that as best we can. And, um, I, I think the next several months we'll see, continue to see significant, um, improvements in both in-game chat. And in the front end.
Now, with that, I guess, uh, can you clarify, right now you have to click the chat system to get like your group information window? So with the group, like group queue, with that function as well, where it's omnipresent, where you can minimize it as well, so you don't have to keep opening and closing it just to. Ready up and then launch.
Those are great questions.
Not to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I don't know, sorry, um.
Cause that, that would be big.
Some of that's just getting designed right now, so, yeah, send that information over in email or whatever and we can make sure it's considered, right? Um, the, the only, the part that's sort of locked down and done is the in-game aspect with the scrolling, uh, the, the, you know, in the match. Aspect, I mean, where you scroll through the history of the chat in-game and then the front-end aspect, whether the chat went on every screen. That's a napkin design right now that we hope to get going on, you know, fairly soon, like within the next month.
I will, uh, make sure that email goes out immediately.
Um, now we've talked about, you know, the, the rest of the year and some changes that, uh, may come. And some people are asking and these are obviously quality of life features and just, you know. One word to answer if that's all you got, but things like, um, strip all modules, strip all cockpit items buttons, is there any? Is that something that could potentially be implemented in those months?
Yeah, I mean, there is, there's a napkin design and that fact, in fact, it's more than that. It's, it's actually an actual. Dot design. We haven't started on it yet of, um, I've described it a little bit. We just need to, I mean, you know, it's, again, it's that UI bottom neck. Where right now they're focused on decals and it's gonna come to the top of heap fairly soon if it does, unless something else comes up and says, oh, we need to do this now. But I think I explained it, it's, it was kind of a, a very clever idea to, in your, in your warehouse. To basically be able to, maybe there's a, um, just for example, like you see the radar deprivation module. And let's say, for example, you like click it or like right-click it or whatever and it, it like pops open and says, you know. Well, which, which one of my mechs have these? And it says, okay, well, these five mechs of yours have that module. And then you like go over to your Jenner JR seven D and then the options say, you know, like strip or whatever, so essentially. You can just quickly, it's, it's, it's limited to that sort of way, but when, if you're in need of a radar deprivation module for the new mech you just bought. You would be able to very quickly in the warehouse say, well, I've got one on this mech, strip it off that one and then put it onto the new mech right away, so. That's just a quick kind of example of what we're thinking, so it should work pretty well. It's not like a full, like, here's a search window box, type anything you want in, in like a full comprehensive search thing. But kind of a, more of a context sensitive, like per item as you click on it, be able to search to know where it is and strip.
Alright, so whoever it was that poked me like fifty freaking times about the module switch, there you go, that's your answer. Um, missile bay doors, I don't, what, what, I don't use missiles a lot, even SRMs, I'm more of a.
I already know. Oh, this is referenced to, um, the few mechs that do have the missile bay doors, there's a delay on them and. Whereas like the king crab and stuff where the claws just open up, but sort of causes a problem with, uh, L R Ms or even SRMs. Now granted, you can't open them up like on the archer, um, I guess. From a player's standpoint is if ballistics don't have a delay in ballistics. from a player's standpoint is if ballistics don't have a delay in ballistics, in a lot of ways are superior than, you know, L R Ms in some cases. Can we get rid of that delay?
Well, isn't it just a matter of just keeping the doors open?
But if you don't.
Have to get rid of the protection that the doors provide.
Yeah, I, I think it's one of those things where some people may not even know about it. Um, and there was a bug, uh, on the archer at least. Uh, I did experience this uh, last week uh, when I was streaming, but it's just, just that.
Gameplay issue that, you know, I, I'd be, obviously I'm unprepared to say this or that. I mean, sure, we could consider it. I mean, I, I don't think there's anything like, like, oh my goodness, we did this for this reason and it has to be that way. It's just, you know, that's an old, old design from, you know, closed beta that basically says, you know, you open the doors and you shoot and it takes a little bit of time to open doors and, but the benefit is if the doors are closed, then you get this kind of protection. So I mean, that can always be reconsidered, for sure.
Uh, Konnyashi, yes, confirmed. There will be an official wiki. Uh, no more news on it right now, but it'll be coming and uh, I'm sure I'll talk to you behind the scenes. The other question I saw keep popping up and Russ, you can totally skip this one if you don't have anything new to say or don't want to uh, touch on it, but um, you'd mentioned in a couple of the past town halls, the potential for updating the engine. Anything new there? Are you still uh?
I'm sorry, give me a repeat on that one, please.
Just an, an engine update you'd mentioned in a couple of past town halls.
Yeah, um, the decision on whether to upgrade, update and or change engines is a major thing, as you might imagine.
Huge.
And it's hinging on one thing in particular, and I won't say what that is, but um, until I get an answer on that, then I, I can't make that decision. I know that's extremely vague, but um, I, that's all I can say about that for now. Um, I think it would take us, it's a significant timeframe. It would probably take us at least a full year to an engine change. It might take us half that long just to do a major engine upgrade to the later versions of Crytek. So these are, these are long timeframes. So you might imagine that um, we need to have certain amount of runway with our game um, before we, we could afford to do something like that. And so um, that, that's a big decision. And for now, I can't say that, you know, we're not actively working on, you know, upgrading the engine, but it's one of those things that could turn almost at any moment. So I'll keep you posted, but I think in the meantime, as you've seen, we are, we're working on some of the longstanding things, you know, like save times and various things that are maybe kind of, you know, cheesing people off or whatever, have been around for a long time. So, you know, and we're overcoming a lot of these things and, and we will, we'll definitely. It's not like, oh my goodness, they have to upgrade or we just live with exactly what we have. And, you know, we're working on it. We're making things better. And so that's all I can say about that for now. And, you know, I hope, um, yeah, I, I want, you know, you guys know, of course, I'd, I'd like the game to be around for ten more years and, and if that's the case, if the game's gonna be around for that long, it's gonna see, it's no, I mean, it has, it's gonna see, you know, major engine upgrades. So um, you, you guys can read between the lines there. It's just, it's one of those business calls we have to make. You just, you know, you have to have a certain amount of runway and then, you know, we'll do that. But it's a very difficult thing for us, because how do we, you know, again, it, we have to find a way to pay for that without, that's not something you're like, hey, guys, you know, you know, whatever, you're not buying the engine upgrade. You're, you're continuing to play the game and, you know, you already own the content you own. So um, there's a lot of factors, both technologically, cost, um, business-wise. I mean, it basically, it goes across all aspects of running a business and try to, to whether or not we can do that, you know, that upgrade. So we know that our game now is um, well, I guess it'll be four years from this October since we went open beta. So yeah, it's been a while and we definitely um, you know, I think it's still, things still look good and still things are holding up, but obviously with every month, every year that goes by, just, you know, it's just the way the world works. We have to continue to look at our, our technology and see what we can do to upgrade it.
So uh, Russ, just going over everything we have tonight, you guys have a lot on your plate regarding the future, but in the past town hall, you did mention possibly Solaris. Um, with all this being said, guilt tree and all the things that is going in July and August, is Solaris still on the docket? And if it is planned, uh, what can we expect to see?
Well, Solaris is very related to the technology question because um, and I guess, I guess the way I would rephrase that question to the people is say, and I've talked about this before, but the amount of time it might take us to create a legitimate replay system within the existing engine is pretty significant. And the way I would ideally like to see Solaris, of course, is to have a proper um, replay system to go along with it. That would, as you can imagine, I mean, you just, I mean, Solaris and there's two guys fighting some major one V one battle and some awesome coliseum. And ideally, you'd like to see ten thousand people watching that match through their client, right? That would be ideal. And so that change, that's a game changer. It's not just like, let's create a Solaris feature. It's like, well, let's create a Solaris feature and create a replay system that might take longer than creating this Solaris feature. So it all kind of comes full circle back to the technology question. So I think thankfully, um, we've rightfully identified, I think, a, a major feature to work on in this guilt tree, which is, you know, one of those systems that really should take priority. If you're talking about depth of game and, and longevity of game, but a Solaris feature has not gone away by any stretch of the imagination. It's hovering right there at the periphery and just saying, we need to make this stuff. Um, but that's that big technology question and replay question that's sort of like, oh my god, how do we, what should we do? You know, it's, it's a tough call.
Um, since you, since the, the chat obviously decided they don't want to get a mech announcement tonight. Just kidding everyone. Um, can you give an idea, not necessarily hinted any mechs, but are you feeling comfortable still with the current timeline? Do you have enough mechs to pick from for a while? Are you feeling any pressure as far as the timeline goes? I'm not asking about any specific mechs, but uh, just maybe a roundabout way.
I think for those that were kind of waiting on mechs that were slightly ahead, I, I think the time is, I think, I don't think we're too far off now. I guess, take that for what you will. I think some of those mechs in question will um, have a chance of being announced in the next few months. I mean, we're considering some mechs now um, that were, you know, potentially thought of as being a little out of our timeframe. Um, you know, things like Mad Cat MK2 and those sort of things. I mean, getting pretty close, you know, so I'm not about to announce anything right now. We might be a few months away, but like, yeah, we've got a few more mechs we want to do. Um, and and I think there's some of those other ones and I just named off one, but there was, you know, there's a list of them that are kind of in that, kind of in that same timeframe that I, I, I think we're getting pretty close now to.
Like late fifties, early sixties, whatever, right? Or not that far?
Yeah, I'm not really caught up on the year. Like I said, it's more about kind of getting through all the mechs of the same technology base and then kind of moving on to the next ones more so than it is about sticking to a year thought, you know?
So this actually got brought up uh, recently. Have you considered bringing some of the older mechs from the Star League that make a presence later on in timeline, but are already under the current technology umbrella?
Ooh, that's a.
I consider all things, yes. I don't know, give me an example, but yeah, sure.
What is a mech that falls into that category, Phil?
Let me get you a whole list, one second.
No, 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 I just want one. I don't want a whole list. Yeah, just one that fall, what do we see? In other words, you're saying we don't see him until after the clans's invade? Or is it uh, they're sitting on Terra in some bunker somewhere?
Um, the Excalibur is one of them. Um, it's a seventy ton IS mech. There's a whole host of them.
That's cool. Um, there was some questions about HUD customization. You want to touch on that at all?
Yeah, I, I, um, we want to do a whole new, we, we, we want to work on the HUD. We want to, I mean, I think it looks nice, but again, I guess if I'm, you know, we're being kind of harsh or whatever, I mean, that's something that's existed since closed beta. So um, there's no doubt it could use um, a refresh, both visually and of course, at the same time, kind of rethinking how everything's done on screen to make sure it just runs a lot faster. So I'm not, I, I admit that I'm not focused on like, how do I make this like XML customizable? Because I don't think I can right now. I don't think, I think the system's too old and too, and not, it wouldn't be worth making it, trying to make it compatible to that kind of customization. I think the first step would have to be, let's kind of totally refresh it and redo and update it and make it fast. And at the same time, make it more customizable. So it's not something we're working on, but it's a, that, that could, you know, that's a good idea and I'd, we'd love to get going on that. Um, I'm not sure when I could get to the top of the list. Hopefully this year we could start to work on something like that. Yeah.
So I love looking at all these people listing their favorite mech. We have so many mechs still to come in this.
So that, that's what I was saying is the Star League mechs. Uh, so as reference, you have the Thug, the Javelin, the Monk Goose, uh, Excalibur. I mean, Pillager, I mean, and that's what I'm saying is all these are actually, you, you could release them. They're, they're current tech and everything. Um, so we've still got quite a bit to go. And it's funny because people always ask me when I'm streaming, when are we going to jump timeframes? And I'm like, guys, there's still plenty of mechs for Russ to choose from, like, we, you know.
Well, you know, the reason mostly they want you to jump is because there's one particular mech.
Or technology, yeah. But I mean, even when you're doing that, I always answer a good timeframe could be thirty sixty, thirty sixty-two. And that, you know, opens up more clan mechs variants, heavy lasers, A T Ms, you name it, stuff like that, but also IS omnis at the time, a lot of the new tech, X pulse, rotary, um, T bolts, I mean, so.
Oh man, I love this game. All right, um, there were a few questions about audio, um, both as far as like maybe reexamining the audio that's been in the game for several years, all the way to sound packs. Do you have any comments on either of those?
Um, no, I think all I could really say is I think the audio is in a similar situation to the HUD, you know, it's um, a lot of it predate, goes back three, four years. So um, there's an opportunity there to do a complete refresh. I just don't have anything more for you at this moment on that.
Understood. I think we are pretty much uh, winding down. You know what? Jack Walker, I'm gonna ask it right now.
I'm gonna say, oh, go, sorry, go ahead.
Well, uh, Jack Walker, he, he bought a, some kind of VR thing, um, specifically for M W O. Now, Jack, I hope you did, you know, you do diligence before purchasing that and, and, you know, because nobody ever guaranteed there'd be any VR implementation, but I knew, I do know that it is something that Russ is interested in. Um, but there's also reasons. There's a lot of reasons why a lot of developers aren't uh, working their game into VR. Russ, your comments on that? If there's anything.
Yeah, as an update, I mean, the, the fact is I still want to do VR. I, I'd love to have VR support for Mechra, but some of this I told you last time, most of this isn't new information, some might be new. The kicker is that a lot of the VR headsets didn't really, one of them is that you have to design your game for VR kind of from the, from the get-go, like meaning from, you know, all the, the HUD, the front end, like all the user interface. And if you don't, it's totally screwed up in the headset. I mean, it's just, ugh, ugh, like you have to redo it. It doesn't work. Um, so that's one challenge.
It's like designing a separate game.
And I think we'd undertake that work if we had a way to say, okay, it's way too much work and effort to try to redo the entire front end, but maybe just for in-game. So once you load into the game, you're in a VR headset. Fair enough. But the last time I looked, you know, I've talked to managers about it in a while, but there was no way to kind of switch on and off, like VR and not VR, VR and not VR. It's like, it's VR from get-go. So you can't really do that going from HUD to not HUD. And then the other kicker is, you know, since we didn't have VR in mind when we first started Mechra Online, it takes an epic amount of FPS to have VR. So all of you guys know what, here, here's the, this is the kicker. This is the kicker. They say it, you gotta have your game running at an absolute smooth ninety FPS to make a VR work, because if the framerate drops below, because you gotta divide it in half, you gotta render it twice. So if you don't have at least forty-five FPS like per eyeball, essentially, people get sick and it just screws up and nothing works. So right now, our game doesn't run that fast. Um, it does for very few people. Um, maybe the people with the hottest machines, you know, I'm not sure if they even get it constantly at very high settings. Um, so we ha, I had, I think I would consider saying, okay, fair enough. VR, you know, is limited to medium detail settings for high spec machines. And I think I'd go ahead and do that and say, now was, but it just came down, down to the, the HUD and, you know, the, being able to turn the kind of the VR unit on and off when you load into a game and go back into the front end HUD. So that's kind of the challenge. And then of course, it got complicated a little bit further by the fact of this technology. This technology upgrade and switch and saying, well, you know, you know, this technology upgrade supports it at the box. Well, are we going to do that or are we not going to do that? So understand it's um, it's uh, it's a lot of factors at play here. So I'll have a conversation again. I think again, if, if the S D Ks on the VR units have updated to the point where we can turn the VR system on and off from front end to in-game HUD. I think at that point, I'd seriously consider jumping on the work and saying, okay, that's what we'll do. It'll only be VR when you're in-game. And it might be limited to fairly high spec machines on like medium detail settings of the game or something. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the point we're at. So I hope that um, you know, helps.
All right, I got two more questions myself and we're gonna probably start wrapping up here. Um, Russ, do you see what I have highlighted right now? Do you want to uh, touch on that at all? Um, simple statement maybe about it or something?
I'm sorry, which one?
Uh, A I P V E.
Um, all I'm gonna say is I'm work, we're working on it. There's people actively working on.
Right.
I'll call it AI, and I'll just use the word. Yeah, sure, P V E, single player, whatever you want to call it, AI systems. It's being worked on. That's, it's, people are working, they're actively working on it right now. And let's, just like I said before, they've, they're working on it. So
Which.
That's all I can say. Will you, will you hear and learn something at Metcon? It's possible. I'm hoping.
So buy your tickets now. Be one of the first people here about. Um, and then there was a question, let's see, who was that? Kay or somebody kept asking about objective-based gameplay. Now, we kind of touched on it a little bit. Um, I don't know, is there anything to say about more objective-based gameplay? Or maybe there's nothing to say right now?
Um, I mean, we're working on the assault game mode, which is very, it's much more objective based and you got the towers and all the things you can do. Right? There's not just one objective. There's like, take out the U C M tower, take out this tower, take out the, you know, airstrip. A lot of more objectives. We are working on that new asymmetrical game mode, which may or may not work out. So yeah, I think so. I think that's signs that we are.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, and I know that it's being looked at, obviously. Um, Phil, anything else?
Very bottom, we have uh, monetization. Are there, do you have any plans? Uh, you know, new methods?
We'll leave that at decals for now. Yeah. I mean, we, we, well, I mean, there's the, there's the supply caches, things that's coming up. It's a little something. There's a decal system and there's the new um, uh, multiple mech drops for faction play. Those are all minor aspects of, you know, incremental ways of, you know, monetizing.
Cool. Well, we are going to wrap up. That was about three hours for tonight. Um, thank you, Russ, for another, well, it was an amazing town hall. I, there was stuff that uh, kind of took my breath away tonight, floored me. Some great news. Uh, I can't wait to see the reaction Reddit and so forth. And again, everybody, this will be up on YouTube as quickly as possible as well as podcast format. And Siri says there's something already on Reddit, so you can go over there. Uh, Siri, please, if you don't mind, drop that link again. Um, and then also for those of you that obviously tonight, it's Friday night. What, what are we doing here in a town hall? Aren't we doing the tournament every Friday night? Well, uh, Bandit, first of all, uh, Bandit and Mike, both of you, great job you're doing. Um, Bandit, happy Father's Day. Enjoy your, your break. Um, if you have not been joining us every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I don't know, for some people it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, depends on where you live in the world. Please check out uh, the live streaming and shoutcasting by Bandit and M D M every single week. These guys are, I actually, it's not just Bandit and Mike. There's so many people involved that are.
Can I just take a second to thank those guys? Thanks, Bandit. Thanks, you guys. I mean, um, I watched the streams on Saturday, you know, I was in there. You guys did a good job. It's, it's, it's really great. So I know, you know, we're still working through some kinks and, you know, we're, you know, updating our policies and various things, but really good job, great matches. Love the Panther. It was an awesome match and um, can't wait to watch the next ones.
Yeah, I mean, I've been, it's a lot of work. There's a lot of refs that are uh, contributing. There's um, just a lot of people behind the scenes and I can't name them all because uh, my memory is shot for the week. But just thank you to everybody that has been participating. I've been having so much fun. Um, the teams that I've been working with, amazing sportsmanship, uh, just really friendly people, working really hard to make these matches happen. And the hardest thing to do is shoutcast and do all of that organization. So again, I'm just going to say, I salute you, Bandit. So again, I'm just going to say, I salute you, Bandit and M D M, you guys are awesome. Keep up the good work, everybody that's involved, Tina, Paul, everybody behind the scenes that is uh reffing or assisting in any way, you guys are awesome. So please tune in every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, depending on where you live, at twitch.tv forward slash Piranha Games. Uh, you can go to the website, check it out, just ask anybody in the community. And that's it on mine. Oh, also, thank you to everybody uh behind the scenes for helping with tonight's town hall. I'll say, let's see, who's out there? Well, you guys know, because again, like I said, my memory is shot. If you've helped tonight, I appreciate it um, big time, everybody that helps.
You're just getting old, man, older. That's that's all it is, let's just be honest, dude.
Starving and yeah, et cetera, et cetera. But I can't remember all the people that I want to remember right now, Konnyashi, uh, Salama, Zuv, um, Wingbreaker. God, anyway, the community here, as I've always said, is the best community in any game. I love you guys, thank you again. Russ, thank you again for taking your time on the end of a work week, at the end of your day, we appreciate it. Great town hall and uh.
You have a good, uh, happy uh Father's Day if you, I don't know if you guys do that, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna have a great uh Sunday.
You guys do that in Canada as well? Is that a thing?
Well, that's a classic American comment, yes.
No, no, I don't know if it's on the same day. I don't know if we like share this, like, you know?
We share it in the US one, we borrowed it from you.
Is that, is that right? All right, guys.
Thanks again, guys, everybody enjoy Father's Day and we'll talk to you next week.
All right, Russ, thank you again, and thank you everyone coming out here. Guys, if you enjoyed this town hall and enjoy everything we do here, don't forget to follow. I will be going live in just a few moments to stream some Mechra Online, so I will see you guys in a few moments. Uh, well, don't go anywhere, we'll be right back.
Happy Father's Day to all of you out there and make sure you say that to your fathers as well, see you guys.
I don't know my father.